So, good evening, everyone. I think we should start with introductions and we will at the board level and then if you could also introduce yourselves, that would be great. My name is Joanne Cannon. I am the superintendent of schools in Addison Northwest Supervisory Union.
Toni Mears, the business manager for Addison Northwest.
It's Stephanie Taylor, I'm the principal here at Virginia Junior High School.
Jeff Glassberg, I'm the director from Walden.
I'm Laura Childers, I'm from Addison.
Chris Kuzinoff from Virgin.
Chris Curry, I'm from Kirk.
Gloria Martin, administrative assistant to the supervisor.
If you don't mind introducing yourselves, we'll just go through the audience.
Ruth Graham from Walden.
And we grant Walden.
Thomin and Bligh, Ferris.
Victor Lloyd, Virginia.
Craig Furtick, Virginia.
Dan Jackson-Donley, Virginia.
David Rose, Virginia.
Frank Pickley.
Ferris.
We're driving out.
As it may.
Nancy Abrams, Virginia.
Thank you, Nancy.
Peter Manin, Fairford.
Anyone else? Thank you. So, the administration has a brief presentation this evening before the public may have any questions for the board. So, this is the board process. I'm going to kind of go through this quickly because I'm sure that you're not wondering about how we developed our budget this evening. You're on to more important things. But basically, the budget process began by providing the administration with guidance. And that guidance included that we need to avoid fiscal jeopardy short and long term. We need to ensure the community's ability to support the budget. We need to protect the public image of the district and to ensure that the reliability of our revenues and expenditures projections are accurate. So, what's the board's role? After providing clear guidance, they allow the administration to make programmatic and instructional decisions. The role of the administration was to, over a period of a number of months, work with the staff to determine, based on our class size policy and any of the other policies, such as the facility policy, and considering the board's guidance, trying to deliver a budget that is not just cost efficient, but also continues to provide a quality program to our students. Toni, I'm going to ask you to go through the financial part. This can hardly see it, I'm sorry.
So, well, you can't really see it, but the --
Can you talk? I'll go make copies of my paper.
Okay. So, the proposed budget that we are putting out for vote is $10,000,458,933. This is a $55,000 reduction from the previous vote. The separately warned article that was approved during the first vote was $100,000. So, the total, and with the obligation to the tech center and the prior year deficit, you have a total union budget of $11,445,000. With the expected revenues from local shares and grants and you have revenues expected of $1,875,583. This gives you your education spending, which is the total amount that you do get taxed on, as $9,168,422. This is a 0.58 percent increase over the current year that you're in. Your equalized pupils for Virgin Junior High School has dropped, so we're at 572.58 students. And your ed spending per pupil with this proposed budget is $16,012.47.
How much is that up from last year, $16,000? Is that up?
It's up about $900 per student.
So, Stephanie, we're on to the next slide. That's yours.
So, I attempted to show some of the changes in some of the major areas of spending that had led to the deficit over the past couple of years. So, I went back to 2013, looked at some key areas: transportation, operations and maintenance, special ed. And, you know, if you look at just the budgeted amount, it doesn't show the whole story. So, there were budgeted amounts and the actual amount. So, over the last couple of years, the budgeted amounts in some of these areas were not sufficient to cover reasonable use in children. So, the budgeted amounts in FY13 was $319,000. The actual was $353,000. The budgeted FY14 was $318,000, again, even though in the previous years, they had gone over, you know, approximately $30,000, $35,000. The FY14 actual was $360,000. The FY15 budgeted amount was $318,000, again, for transportation. That's home to school and athletics, co-curriculars, extracurriculars, field trips, and the transportation that we use for some of our programs. And so, FY15, again, was budgeted $318,000. I'm working very, very hard to keep it under $318,000 this year, but we've cut transportation across the board in a lot of areas. And so, FY16, we have budgeted $348,000. And that's going to be reflected in the assessment from the district, home to school. And that also includes transportation for athletics, for extracurriculars, for some of our programs that are off-campus that require that transportation. So, the next slide. Same thing with operations and maintenance. So, the FY13 budgeted amount was $919,000. The actual was $1,038,000. FY14 was $952,000. The actual was $1,004,000. FY15 budgeted is $1,040,000. And for FY16, we have budgeted $1,051,645,000. Fuel oil has been a major contributor to our overages. It's part of the operations and maintenance budget. The budgeted amount in FY13 was $125,000. We spent just under $149,000 that year. FY14 was $125,000 budgeted. Again, what was spent was $165,849.30. These were all figures that contributed to the deficit over those years that are part of what we're struggling with right now. FY15, again, budgeted $120,000. And it's just sheer luck that fuel oil prices dropped down to where they did this year. So, we are going to bring it in under $120,000, but I can't predict where they're going to be next year. So, I budgeted $150,000 for next year. So, special ed spending, another source of, and speech and language, I'm sorry, another source of the deficit in prior years. FY13 budgeted was $1,679,000. What was actually spent was $2,369,000. The following year, $1.993 was budgeted. The actual was $2,229,000. FY15, this year, we budgeted $2,158,000. And for the coming year, FY16, we have $2,597,996. And again, that's being assessed at the central office this year and spread. Maybe, Toni, you want to talk about how the assessment is done, but it's spread.
The assessment is calculated based on your percentage of equalized students in each school. And Virgin Junior High School has about 51 percent of the students.
Stephanie?
Yeah?
What is the current year's pay for that figure?
I don't know, because it comes from central office now.
We don't have that number, George. And remember, we don't get the revenues until August. So, we are predicting a deficit, but we cannot give you the scope of what that will look like until you get your revenues in August.
We talked many times in this venue about the unpredictability of special ed. And when you're creating a budget, you actually don't, can't really predict the population of students that you'll be serving coming year.
So, am I right in believing that part of what the problem was there was that we overestimated revenue? And in the past, for special education, not just did we spend more than what we had maybe budgeted, but we had overestimated revenue as well?
That's a good question, Chris, but I don't believe that was the case. It was really spending.
Okay.
Special ed revenues are actually given by the state to us based on the service plan that was provided. So, those are, those numbers, we don't estimate if all the state gives us those numbers. So, if you under-budget, you're going to not have enough revenues to cover it.
Got it.
So, this is just a snapshot of the enrollment from 2007. We peaked just under 700 there, actually, 656,000. And we steadily declined to the predicted enrollment of 485 students here. That's grade seven through 12. So, we are a much smaller school. We are 26 percent smaller than we were in 2007. And we can predict at fair accuracy to the incoming kindergarten class. So, it's not a big secret. You know, you can determine what that is. I'm not sure this, the enrollment was planned for in the previous years. And so, we had to make up the difference with some significant staffing reductions over the last two years. Depending on who you're counting, we've reduced staff anywhere from 11 to 12 to 13 people if you're counting par educators as well and some natural attrition. So, we, the 13, 14 school year, we had 94 adult bodies in the building. That would be par educators and special educators. We reduced 87, 7.3 FTE. The reductions are sort of spread over. Some people have part-time jobs. And then, we've got another 4.42 FTE reductions proposed for the 15, 16 school year. And I thought, I did a little calculation. This is a month or so ago when we did this presentation. Yes, salary is a big portion of what our budget is, but the FY14 totals were $3,378,850 in salaries. That's just salaries. I didn't add the benefits to that. That's just salaries for those, I think, what was it, 97 people. FY14 totals in salary was $3,130,000. And FY16 is $3,172,000. So, we have reduced, but in the meantime, there were contractual benefits and contractual increases. But that's still a 7 percent increase in salaries. So, we're making every effort to be a cost-effective program here and still deliver what we need to be a comprehensive high school. Do you have any questions?
I have a question regarding the special ed budget. I noticed this year, it's two line items. Last year was just the special ed and the district office. My calculations show an 8 percent increase in the budget between the two. Now, you've got a reduction from the budget for special ed for this year over last year. And that means that you've got a significant increase in the district offices. Where is that money? That's an $800,000 increase.
Can you show me what document you referenced?
Well, I had to go online and looked at the budget that was presented in the --
So, unfortunately, in the FY15 year, the current year that we're in, when the assessments were put out to the schools, there was actually a $400,000 fund balance in the central office. That got applied to everybody's assessment. So, the assessments for this year are artificially reduced because it's using a $400,000 fund balance.
Should be inflated.
Or inflated. No. Well, for 15, they're reduced because of a $400,000 fund balance from a previous year.
Could we stop there just for a second to make clear? So, what does a fund balance mean? It means that in the prior year, we saved money.
I understand.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that. So, in the prior year, we saved money and then we applied that savings against the assessments for the current school year.
Well, the issue I have is the combined budget between the district office and the special ed office shows a rather large increase. It's an 8 percent increase over last year between the two. Okay? I want to know where that increase is coming from. Why one of them, when you show a decrease in the special ed budget in a line item, and it's so high in the district office?
So, these are two different --
I know it's two line items.
Two different budgets. So, let me try to address, as Toni and Jeff were trying to explain. The reason that the central office budget looks like it jumped is that we don't have offsetting revenue for FY16 as we did in the current year. So, you see that that actual increase looks larger than it would have without that revenue. It's not typical that we hold on to that amount of revenue.
You're not supposed to.
Well, no, Ken, you can do it. You can do it. My belief is, every year, if that happens, it should, the decision should go back to the boards to decide how to use revenue. So, with that said, in special education, this is the first year that it's consolidated. We're required to do that by law now. And as Stephanie pointed out with her slides, we have had multiple years of budgets where we have spent more than we've budgeted for. And I know in particular that the budgets that were developed, that were delivered to the agency of education, were not the same budgets that were included when the schools were voting on their budgets. So, something happened between that time. And as with transportation and as with energy, I believe that we were under-budgeting entities like special ed and the example of transportation and maintenance and operations.
Well, special ed can change on a daily basis.
It certainly can, and that is --
I understand that much of it, okay? My problem is, there's such an increase in the district office.
Because of the --
I understand special ed. And the special ed comes from the federal government through the state government.
Yes.
Okay? So, that money has to come. I want to know why there's such a big increase that's so far unexplainable in the district office. That's a significant amount of money.
It is.
You know, that's not chump change when you're looking at cutting things like special ed, like extracurricular, which is 3 percent. You know, this is, that's a big increase.
If I could, I wanted to try to bring some clarity to that. So, according to the figures that I have, the actual increase in central office costs attributable to the high school are a net of $22,000. Okay? So, here's what, here's what makes that up, okay? In the current school year, our, the high school's share of central office costs was offset by almost $210,000 in surplus. Okay? So, when we compare that, our assessment for the coming year, FY16, with FY15, it shows $232,000 in increased assessment. But if you subtract the surplus that we used to offset that for the current year, the difference is $22,000.
Okay.
The balance of central office costs, let me, let me keep going. Central office costs for FY16 now also include transportation, which formerly was included in the high school budget as a separate line item. That was mandated under state law to centralize transportation costs. So, that accounts for some of what's showing up under Addison Northwest Supervisory Union costs that were previously a separate line item in the school's budget. So, it's moving stuff around on the budget. The big driver in terms of overall dollars is an increase in special ed costs. They're up almost $440,000. That, too, is in the central office budget that's assessed out to the individual school. So, special ed is not a separate line item in the high school's budget. It's done at the supervisory union level and assessed out to each of the schools. So, it is a significant increase, absolutely.
My calculation was roughly 8 percent.
I'm, I can't debate whether the 8 percent is right or wrong. It may be, but I'm trying to explain what makes that up. And what makes that up is $440,000 in increased special education costs. And an increase in this year's, in the coming year's assessment for central office costs as compared to this year of almost $232,000. But it's not an increase in spending.
So, are you having a separation of services then? But my understanding is, we're being billed for a certain amount of special education here. And then, the district office again billed or paying for a certain amount of special education also. Is that what you're saying? Because you've got a, what the line item is showing is a decrease in special education. But then, when you add the district office to it, it shows an increase of up to $3.4 million.
So, all special ed --
This was online. This is what I got off, what was in, on the Virgin Junior High School budget. What I saw, what I drew online.
Okay. So, as I understand it, all special education costs are now coming through the supervisory union assessment. So, when you look at your budget book and you look at prior years, the high school did have separate line items for special education costs. Those are now zero for FY16. And the supervisory union assessment includes special education. And I will admit, it makes it very hard to track from one year to the next. This was not an effort to obfuscate. This is, in fact, in direct response to state law. That said, "Centralize your costs at the supervisory union level." So, the supervisory union, your 8 percent may be right. And what I'm trying to do is explain what that's made up of. And it's made up of special ed costs. And again, we don't have the $209,000 surplus that we had for the current year to offset our assessment for central office costs. So, the spending in the central office assessment of the high school is only up $22,000. We don't have the offsetting revenue of the surplus for FY16. Am I getting closer at all?
It's a good try.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Are you looking at the A&amp;W budget on the website, or are you trying to figure out the assessment piece, why there's such an increase?
I'm trying to look at the whole line items, go and see the whole thing. I served on school for nine years, so I understand all the line items. So, I'm just very, I'm trying to understand how it can show such an increase between the two. Okay? It's a tight budget. And I'm not going to, I just want to know why discrepancy there with the special ed and the district office, that's all. As far as the high school budget, I don't know where you're going to cut it from, but I'm going after a big piece right now. And I just don't understand why the district office shows such an increase.
So, based on what you're talking about, we're thinking that you were looking at the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union budget because what I have here.
It's on page nine, right dead center of the page.
Sorry.
Oh, man. I need to feel long enough for this. I guess I should have brought glasses.
And anyone else?
So, the sheet that she just gave to you is the comparison for assessment pieces. This doesn't, this is only the --
Well, you can go make it easier with the little pie chart you have. This one breaks it down and shows you a little picture. It shows what I'm saying. All right? Because it goes from 10 line items to 14.
Because now we are --
And I understand, you should have had 14 line items. I mean, the more you have, the better off you can explain.
Well, yes, but this is, the FY15 year is the first year that special ed needed to be consolidated in the central office. It used to be handled directly in the schools. So, that brought in a line item into our budget. The other unfunded mandate from the state was that transportation now needs to be handled by the central office, which means that all transportation to and from school needs to be paid for by the central office and then distributed back to the schools as an assessment. So, that was an additional line item that we had to put in. So, that, those are the two line items that are new. And there may be others because of the way we are breaking things out easily, more easily to report back to the state.
And what was the overall transportation budget?
It's $476,000. So, when I look at, and we need to make sure the folks have a chance to ask a question, but I am really trying to answer your question. So, I'm, I'm looking at my copy that was in the reports that were mailed out for the supervisory union budget. And I look at the difference between FY15 and proposed FY16. The difference is about $560,000. $476,000 of that is transportation.
But that would show a decrease in the budget on, in one other area. So, you know, it's going to move from one item to another. So, it's still going to be the same, the same thing.
Correct. But you were asking why the supervisory union budget increased, and that's what drives the increase in the supervisory union budget.
But you still have transportation set with the --
Correct.
-- Virginia Junior High School.
Correct. Well, except the transportation line items within the high school's budget are not the cost of to and from school. They're for individual programs. And Stephanie, maybe you can speak to what the difference is. But the transportation cost at the high school did drop because now it no longer includes to and from school that's in the supervisory union budget.
I do want to add to that, Jeff, that in the next round of budgets, FY17, all of the transportation costs, whether they're extracurricular or to and from school, will come to the central office and be assessed back out to the, to the schools. But for this particular, for FY16 only, the additional extracurricular sports transportation pieces remained at the high school with the only difference to and from school.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is a very primitive rudimentary question. I don't understand the accounting, but I know depending on how you do, you know, profit and loss and budgets and all things can look very different. And you're still talking about the same amount of input and output. So, my question is, somebody said that special ed this year was going to cost more than $440,000 more than last year. Is that correct? Did I get that right? And so, my question is, if I got that right, accounting stuff aside, whether it's in central office or this office or whatever, is that a real cost? Is it going to cost that much more in dollars coming from somewhere from taxpayers for special ed this year for the school?
That's what we think.
And so, my root question is, can you tell us why? Are there many, many more students in special ed now?
I can address some bigger picture of things. We know that since the beginning of the school year, 21 new special education students moved in. And out of that 21, I would say half of them are classified as high needs, ones that have already come to us with expensive programs written out on their IEPs. So, for instance, you know, we might not even see a student walk through the halls because they're already going to an outside placement. Their parents have moved here. So, that means they now have established residency. And so, we, we now have to pay for the special education costs. But similar circumstances have happened. We haven't had a lot of students move out, but we have had students move in. but we have had students move in. And those programs are already mapped out and, um, required by law.
So it is because of many more special ed students? If things were more consolidated throughout the state with the risk of those students moving to one small area, it'd be spread across a broader population and therefore a small community. That's what, I'm sort of answering my own question. It seems to me that's the way it would be.
Yeah, but we, we have a-
And that's an argument for changing the whole system of the state.
Right.
Seems like so many of these problems are related to the state. Why problems? Is that true?
Our students come to us with very complicated backgrounds. They, they often don't just have a disability, but they're often students in poverty or they come from families that are, um, that are not intact. They come from homeless situations. And so they, they, it's not, it's not a simple situation. But when they move here, we have consolidated our programs so that, um, we are now budgeting for it in one entity. And we're also gonna be going through a review of our programs, which will hopefully be able to give us some better information about how we're serving our kids so that we can look at cost and quality. Um, but I believe that budgeting the way we are now allows us to more evenly see the increase across the board rather than the volatile, you know, ups and downs. Like, for instance, a, a small school like Addison, if they have a, a student move in with a high needs, that's gonna affect that school a whole lot more significantly than a bigger school like, like Virginia Union High School. So we, we haven't been able to see the trends yet because this is the first year we, we have consolidated the budget. But I, I do believe that we're going to get our arms around this and you'll see less highs and lows.
So do you know if there's this much of an increase at all to schools in the state? Or if somehow a special ed, special ed has gone up?
I haven't had a, a time to analyze that. I do know that many districts struggle with trying to stay within their spending for special education. I can't tell you to what degree, um, but certainly, um, it's not uncommon.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Are the questions just about what we've talked about so far, not for the whole?
You can pretty much ask them about the budget.
Well, my questions were some about that little English mailing we got in our box.
The flyer?
Yes. And I have questions about that, but I don't know if it would be that.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Yeah, but there's a, oh, just without it, though, in this, um, you know, a lot of ways in what you made improvements. And it says, you know, new everything, new treasurer, new, a whole lot of new people. And then it's sort of these investigations into, you know, practices in the past. And it just kinda makes you, oh, can I look, um, just some of the way, this phrase makes you wonder what's really been going on or to just be a really one, you know, new treasurer. Address previous deficits. Oh, um, especially this one. We lost an investigation of past administrators. And I'm like, well, what was, what, what was going on? What was found? What did they do? What did they not do? In other words, have mistakes or possible even, possibly even dishonest things been happening here in the past that have caused some of these problems? Is that what's part of what's being investigated? And I mean, well, I should get the gist of what I concerned about, don't you?
We share your concern. We share your concern a lot. We've been dealing with this for, since last July, just about. Joanne's first year, first day on the job, we got a letter from the Department of Education saying that our federal funding had been cut off in April of two thousand fourteen. And the previous administrators did not tell the board that our federal funding had been cut off or that anything was wrong at all. And that was the beginning.
Oh, a cover-up, I guess.
Of, of, of a very, very difficult situation. And it, it's seriously unfortunate, but it has left our students, our staff, and our administrators in very difficult positions at no, they did nothing to deserve it except work under administrators who didn't do a good job.
Could you be held responsible in any way?
We are working on that. Maybe Jeff could speak to that.
So I, I wanna, I, I serve as chair of the supervisory union board, assumed that position last March. Uh, and have taken responsibility for following through on the results of the findings by the Agency of Education and following up to ensure that we are putting in place the policies and procedures to prevent those oversights from occurring in the future. What we know as the result of audit findings is that at this point, there's no evidence of misuse of funds. What we are aware of is a failure to report, a failure to report accurately, and a failure to report both to the state agency of education as well as to the voters in this district. But a range of required reports, uh, for access to federal and state funds were not delivered timely or in some cases accurately. In terms of holding people accountable for that, that process is still underway. We have asked for licensure investigations to be done by the Agency of Education. We are also pursuing other avenues, which to discuss in public would threaten the viability of those actions. So we are diligently pursuing the ability to hold people accountable. But I, I want to stress to you, at this point, it's not a question of misuse of funds. There was dereliction of duty, there was neglect. But it's not as though there were funds used for nefarious purposes.
Those are these doctors get sued for. Do we have any idea, I mean, I can see it's not a total aggravation, but do we have any idea how much some of these derelictions of duty actually cost in dollars? Or did they, how costly is all this?
Well, we have, in the last two years, we've had over a million dollars worth of deficits. Now, let me explain that, right? Okay, so we, we had, um, the super, uh, excuse me, the administrators built the budgets, right? Those are the budgets we presented to the town. That's what we collected taxes on. But we spent more than that because those budgets were built poorly, significantly poorly. So now we have, now we have the, our public saying, what the heck are you doing? And then it happened the second year, right? So that's one of the consequences. Another consequence is, um, we spent eighty thousand dollars on, um, on specialists to clean up the, many of the issues that were happening because of the neglect that the administrator has been, was doing. Um, we had to have some good experts come in. Um, we had, uh, the business manager got done. There were four months where we didn't have a business manager at all except for on a, um, per DM basis because we couldn't hire somebody. We, we had to clean up what was going on in the first place. We hired Tanya at the end of, beginning of November, right? So it was, it's been costly. Um, more costly on morale, I, I think. I mean, we're not spending anything that we, that didn't go towards the children. We just didn't spend it in a transparent manner, at least at first. Because the budget was significantly different than what we spent, right? That's not transparent. We're, we're presenting a budget that says we're gonna spend nine million dollars and we spend ten million dollars instead. That's, that's bad fidelity trust. And so that is a serious consequence of what's happened over the last few years with the administrations.
Maybe I missed it, but has this been published somewhere to the other people? Do you really know what you've all just told me? Cause I mean, I feel a little less agree about it, or I'm not sure what the right word is. But I'm suspicious at least now that I heard this answer, but I didn't know it before. And I felt like, you know, the taxpayers were nothing, or told the truth and that, you know, there was a cover-up. And that makes me in a very bad mood and hold on to my money more firmly than ever.
Yes, so I-
I'm thinking if the public really is well aware of this and, um, i- 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 understand better, maybe they give the, the student or to that school another one more chance.
That's right. That's right. And that's what we're working towards. And it's a long road. We can't reach it. I mean, it was in the papers in the summer last year in two thousand fourteen, um, what was happening at the school.
Well, it's stuff that sort of got me hooked up, but I can't remember it all. It got me really suspicious, but of course, no names were named. And of course, we want that. And, um, really not totally satisfied about it, as a matter of fact, some of us. And, but we know each other, we get it. But I hadn't quite put it all together. I just became increasingly suspicious that something was really rotten in Virginia Union High School. And I didn't wanna, you know, spend more money on something that was rotten.
Well, it's no longer rotten. It's, it's actually, I mean, it's, I feel like we've had a garden of, um, uh, perennials that weren't doing so well. And with Stephanie and Tanya and Joanne, they are tending this garden and we're, we are producing things that are gonna taste so much better. I mean, it, I would love to talk to every single one of our taxpayers and say, we got a new board, we got new administration, we are aware of all these problems. We are trying, with great success in many ways, to identify the issues that have been, um, that were a problem and then address them. And, and we're doing the investigation, or we aren't, but we have asked for investigations. We, uh, we established a finance committee this year, this, uh, did. The supervisory union has established, um, a policy, um, committee. We've also established an audit committee at the supervisory union level. We got all our audits done, which was something that the prior administration hadn't been able to do. This administration got three years of audits completed in a time period that the prior administration couldn't get done in three years.
So you think if you straighten this all out, we're ever gonna get the price down instead of sixteen thousand kids?
That would be the hope.
That's a lot of money. You pay less than that at a private Catholic high school. And we pray.
Well, just for, ours isn't the highest. Sixteen thousand dollars isn't the highest in, in that. I know, I know. It's a lot of money.
A lot of people, that's what they make a year in this town.
But, but that, that, that's unacceptable for a taxpayer.
That's right, well-
We can't, when, when Mrs. Roy says sixteen, sixteen thousand dollars, when we know, I knew in, through the nineties that the enrollments were going down for the next ten years. And I know they're still going down. And yet, the price is skyrocketing per pupil.
Way above the rest of the-
And classrooms are getting smaller, yet the cost is going up. Somebody's got to explain why.
Some level, if we added more kids to junior hires, you know, fifteen or twenty kids, we still have to have a math teacher, a science teacher, an English teacher, and a history, and a swing of thirty kids one way or the other might not make a, make a big difference in terms of the number of staff we have to have.
Yes, but that's where your income is based.
And so we have fewer kids, we just have fewer kids in each one of those.
But that's where your income is based. That's where you get your money from the state. So the problem is, as your, as your numbers go down, that means the numbers inside the school have to go down. It's a tough thing to suck up, but you, you know, we can as taxpayers look up and say, sixteen thousand dollars, and we know it's gonna go up again.
If, if I may, sir, last year, there was a reduction in staff. This proposed budget is a reduction in staff.
I know it shows that.
So we're really working on that. And you know as well as I do, having been a member, that when something happens here and you change the number of students, then that changes the way the state looks at everything and the amount that they provide.
That's my next, when, how as a board, other than what the taxpayers do by voting the budgets down, you get the picture. But the people that we're trying to get the message to aren't paying attention. Okay, well, I know where you're getting your money from. And I know your, if your percentage is shrinking, that they say you're sending. I know that. How do you get through to them? I don't see Diane here tonight. I don't see any of the other politicians.
But those are the people that everyone has to convince.
Well, that's what we're trying to do. And, and, you know, I'm sorry, but in order to get through to them, you know, more budgets have to be voted down in order to get through to them.
Well, that's not true.
Well, how else do you get through to them?
All it does is hurt the children. You do not have to go down this budget in order to make a message to Diane.
I know. The budget is tight. I've seen your budget.
If you don't answer your call, how's that?
I'm putting email Diane on my list of things to do, and I have her email. She answers.
It's very frustrating to hear as well as it is there.
Yeah, I hear you.
Now, this past administration, did you people, were you forced to give them all a good recommendation? So they don't go and do this to somebody else?
The board doesn't provide recommendations.
Somebody's gotta give them a reference from Virginia Union High School. That's who's last in plan.
Well, the superintendent is retired. The previous principal is no longer employed. And the, and the business administrat-, uh, business manager, I, I have no idea what business manager is. I, I can assure you, we did not give recommendations, this board did not give recommendations of any of those people. The principal got a new job before he reta-, before he left on June thirty. We didn't know till July third what had happened. We did not know. He left. We knew nothing.
Very nice, huh?
Yes, sir.
I think the frustration is not with the board per se, but with the whole process.
Yeah.
And the whole process stinks. And it, it, that's what it's coming down to. And everybody I'm sure has been watching from porch forum. And no matter what it is, whether you're for or against the budget, doesn't matter. What matters is the legislative, um, people that we elect in are not listening. One budget going down is not gonna be a drop in the lake. I mean, it's not gonna matter if it's one budget. It's when the whole state goes and says, we're not passing a budget, then maybe they'll listen. So why hurt our school in trying to make a message? The message isn't being heard anyway. They're not listening to us. They will not listen to us. I, I, I'm so frustrated with them that it's, but I think that's the consensus here tonight. It's not, it's not here. Yes, we'd like to know where all that money went to. We still would love to know that. But the, the real frustration is, we can't take it out on our school to satisfy what has to happen in the whole state. They have to pay attention and they're not going to. So, you know, until two hundred and fifty-three budgets go down, or whatever the number is, one budget, Virginia and Bristol are just, they're not gonna pay attention. So why hurt our school?
I think we should leave the politics out of this. It's very frustrating. Temperatures go up very fast.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
Let's go.
So basically, all that money is just playing. Is they, they budgeted too much, I mean, too little for too much. And then, and you guys have to pay all these extra people to straighten out the mess.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have to pay for what they didn't budget. That's all that money is.
That's exactly, it's very, very sad, actually. It's simple and annoying beyond belief, and that's a serious understatement.
Now, do you monitor the budget throughout the year, or do you wait till the end of the year?
Well, that's one of the things that the finance committee has started doing. Paying attention to-
So I actually never, never monitored the budget?
Well, we had this last meeting that we had almost, what, about a month ago. And it jumped in the supervisory union, we looked at something that went from being maybe a hundred thousand dollars after being two hundred thousand dollars or more in a way, and because we had students that moved in. And while we had this many students that moved in, and we're in the last two months of the year. So at that point, was there left to cut to make that different? If monitor it or not, it was still, we may have been aware that that happened, but there's not much we can do about that at that point. It's gonna change the outcome at the end of the year at that point, 'cause we're pretty much already spent it all.
Yeah, but you only had ten million to spend. Doesn't matter if you take two hundred thousand from special ed, you gotta take two hundred out from something else. I mean, that's what a budget is.
You can't take it out of something else.
Well, that's part of a budget.
So, go ahead.
I, I wanna make sure we're answering your question. The board reviews budget to actual and forecasted to complete on a monthly basis. That had not been the policy or the practice of the board for the high school, nor for the supervisory union previously. We began that process. We now have included in that, as I mentioned, a forecast. So it's not just your budget is X and you've spent Y, it's what's the forecast to complete? So that we can assess where we are relative to budget. That happens at each monthly.
So did they forecast how long it's gonna take to rein this all in, all the section? The deficit, yes.
Well, the last of the deficit will be paid off next in the fiscal year seventeen.
Geez.
I know.
It really hurts when you don't even have kids in these schools for the last how many years and you still, and you can't afford to retire anymore because you gotta keep paying this for these educated college people that are supposed to lead us, poor little know-nothings that just graduated high school. That's what makes you accurate.
Stephanie is gonna show, two, two things I wanna say. One, an additional procedure that we implemented this, this last year and a half. Prior to then, there was no methodology for spending money in the school, right? A teacher wanted us new box of crayons, this is a high school, a new box of pencils, excuse me, or some new calculators. They just called up the vendor and said, send us things, and the administration paid it. That's not happening anymore. Every expenditure in this school has got to have a purchase order that is authorized by not only the department head, but also our principal. And so we're not gonna be paying vendors that haven't already been authorized. That's another piece of how we have tried and succeeded at reducing, paying better attention to what we're spending in comparison to what to-
How did we get to be two thousand fifteen before everybody got smart not to do that? Why wasn't it done fifty years ago?
You will let people buy stuff without P O?
There was no P O system that was used in the school very well, let's put it that way. There was a, there was a purchase order system, it just wasn't used because we didn't have a principal and we didn't have a superintendent that insisted on it.
It's bad.
But we do now.
Yeah.
We do now.
That's why I'm through, Lori. I've always filled out purchase orders.
Okay, so I, I said we do have-
When they, when they get approved or not was maybe under the discretion of someone. But I have always filled out a purchase order.
Purchase requisition, yes, yes.
Requisition order.
Yeah, the purchase order covers the money and the magic, that's the difference.
So the requisition, so it wasn't like I could just go order.
Okay, but, but, but the piece that was missing was your requisition and the budget. There was no communication between those two things in prior years. Now, no one can order something without making sure that that budget line item is not over. Right?
That's true.
And that was not the case in the past, but it is the case now. I, I would like you guys, if you can bear with us. We've got a really good team on work here, we have a great administration, we have good board members, we really care about what we're doing. We're really working hard to, to, to take care of your money in the way that I wanna take it care of.
Yes, your money too.
It is my money too, absolutely. I'm a single mom, I have four kids. I get it.
But what's said, look at the people that are sitting here. How many of us are here? Can I?
Well, we have had this time present, I-
Oh, you are.
Well, at least we remember. And we reset that.
If I fall off the chair, we-
So, just one second, Lynn, I'm aware, excuse me, I'm aware that it is seven o'clock, and we were hoping to wrap up by seven. Um, Lynn has another question, and I don't wanna shut anybody down for, for lack of time. But I also am aware that that's what we would like to do, and we do have another board meeting after this, so.
Well, you owe us six minutes.
I owe you six minutes?
Yeah, she didn't start on time.
You were late.
So here's my only comment I'd like to make, and, and this sort of is following what you're saying. We're not voting on a line item budget. We're voting on a budget of ten million dollars. So I don't care what the line item says. If, if she wants books and she's run out of money and you take it out of something else, that's not, we don't care about that. So when there's two hundred thousand dollars left over or, or comes into special ed, as, as Chris used, again, it's, that's not our concern where you get that from. Except that we have, we have voted, I hope, on a ten million dollar budget. A ten million dollar budget that you can use any way you want to. So I wanna make sure that that's what we're talking about here. Because otherwise, you're gonna have a deficit again, and we're not gonna put up with that anymore. We've gotta end it. It's got to end this year.
We gotta wait till two thousand seventeen. It depends how long it's gonna take.
No, we don't need a, we don't need a deficit in this next coming year.
In twenty fifteen.
Right, so where you've talked, that doesn't sound like that's the case.
Lynn?
Yeah.
One, one thing that you have to realize is that the budget that we're in right now was built on bad figures and-
We're talking about the budget we're going to be voting on.
No, no, let's talk about the one we're in right now. It was built on bad figures, and we would be looking at a half million dollar deficit at the end of this year, were it not for Stephanie. Realizing that we had a problem, she dove right into this. I can't believe how many extra hours she has put in in cutting everything down, denying expenditures, cutting bus trips. She has really worked at this, and we should end up very close to being right in line with what was budgeted, even though that was below what it should have been.
We're not talking about the same year. We're talking about two different years of budget.
But the point, the point is that we have an administrator that really understands the problem and has tackled it head on. And she's the one that's gonna be running things this coming year. So your concern about a deficit being generated in the coming year is something that she has a handle on. Now, special ed is special ed, and we can't control that. But outside of that, she's got a handle on it.
I'm frustrated with this answer, but I will, I'm gonna let it pass.
There is not a good mechanism yet to manage special ed costs and special ed over budget. There is not a good mechanism yet. But I expect this year to bring more of that in line. So we have this one chunk, which is the ten million dollars less the two million dollar of, okay, so it's eight million dollars is just the high school, two million dollars is the special ed budget, right? It's not quite accurate, because we have the central office in there as well. Um, but, uh, sorry, hi Emily.
Hi Emily.
No, you're, you're not, we haven't started the meeting yet. Yeah, thank you, you're okay, keep breathing.
Special ed was only what you guys brought up. It could be anything. It could be transportation, it could be fuel, it could be hot lunch program, it could be anything.
But, but we have a handle on those other anywheres. Stephanie is in charge, we have a purchase order system that is working, and it's going to work even better in twenty sixteen. We have a handle on those expenditures. What we don't have a handle on as well is in the special ed budget.
Okay, so when I leave this meeting tonight, my understanding will be that if, 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 if it's any other item except special ed, you're going to stay within the budget, but if it's, if special ed comes over two hundred thousand, we will have a two hundred thousand dollar deficit. Is that what you're saying?
I, I don't know what the special ed budget is gonna come out, and if it does come out as a deficit-
Then I don't understand that.
Then I, I, I think what you wanna hear is that we will make every effort to, to compensate for any deficit out of our control through the local budget, and that's what we're working to do.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
I mean, that's a budget.
Yes, yes, okay.
So we all send Stephanie flowers, is that what you're saying? She oughta help us.
Chocolate.
And I, I'm also a taxpayer in this community, I just wanted to-
You're not getting chocolate.
No, we, we are, we're, I'm very conscious of that.
I know, it's just, a budget's a budget.
I got a lot of praise heath on me by the board members, I wanna say that we have, uh, we have a rock star as a director of special ed in the central office, her name is Carrie Griswold, and she's doing a very good job at minding the numbers and do, making accurate budgets for what this is going to cost.
I think what you're really trying to do here tonight is get us trust. Am I right or wrong?
That is exactly what we're trying to do. That is exactly what we're trying to do. We know the trust has been broken with this committee. We know that.
I need one.
Do you trust us, Lynn? Do you trust us?
Are you?
Do I trust you?
Are you? Did we make any headway?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
But they explained that, and that added up very fast.
I still gotta pay the bill.
I know.
Follow along.
But it added up fast.
Yeah, I'll tell you how to vote, we do that.
Forty-nine years.
Forty-nine long years.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Really, it's, it means a lot.
I feel like you're gonna frog. I felt sorry for you a couple times.
I'm a very emotional person.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you guys. So we're gonna call the merger, and thank you folks. I don't think we do need to do inter- thank you.
Thank you.
Really, thank you. Come again if you could.
I will.
Okay, thanks.
Hopefully we won't need another year for me to stop.
Please, I was, wanted him just to come to the regular meeting. I was definitely not talking about the budget, yes. Right, thank you, Emily. Um, so we have pretty much the same people, except for the two student reps. Would you guys like to introduce yourselves?
Um, I am Emily Martin, I'm a junior, designated senior.
Uh, Josh Sickles, Reverend Evan.
Ken.
Juniors, both juniors, and that was Dea.
That was Dea, but she has said goodbye and froze senior finals week.
Being a senior is difficult.
It is.
It is, you've just won.
Next year.
Yeah. Uh, public communication? Our public. Would you like to say anything, you two?
Can I, oh, say that being a senior on this end of the, as a parent, is totally different than I ever would have imagined? So, and again, I have three times over, but, um, yeah, when you, until you're in those shoes with your children, trying to make those hard decisions and keep up with everything right till the last day.
Oh my gosh.
It's hard, it's really hard. And as a teacher for over thirty years, didn't know that. It's a whole different ballgame.
Quite remarkable. Parenting, the hardest job you'll ever do, ever, and not know if you're doing it well until way too late. You guys? So we have an educational presentation?
Yeah, actually, wait, two. I don't know which one, I guess, uh, school climate and data, we could do that one first, um.
You want me to pass it around?
I'll, I'll pass this around. You do that to the audience and I'll do the room. Yes, do you have that? Okay.
She's best known, which is this, behavioral arches.
So this is a, um-
It came later today. It came when the-
You know, in an effort to actually spend some time and effort on stuff that happens in the school, I'd love to get to know where we're at about, we, we had to have some regular reporting. And it seemed like we're very close to the end of the year. I'm not saying we won't have a few additional behavior fractions uh, between now and June sixteenth, but this is a tally of all the, um, uh, behavior fractions that, um, that we've experienced. You know, maybe off by one or two, you know, recordings is done by us human beings, and sometimes we handle something quickly upstairs and it doesn't get reported to R R C. But this is basically a, a list in descending order of, um, the things that happen here and the kind of behaviors. And I, you know, we can disaggregate the data any way you want, but I just thought it might be interesting for you to be exposed to this. I'm guessing that it's not something that's been brought to your attention in the past. So, and going forward, we can, we can talk about how you'd like to see this. Obviously, uh, our biggest issue is with tardies. Um, that's not necessarily, that's not tardy to school in the morning, that's tardy to class, uh, and reports, where, where students, teachers report it. We, we leave it up to the teacher to report tardies, um, and deal with it, but, you know, we do wanna track it, so, um, twelfth graders have a, seniors have a little bit of a problem getting to class, and if I look at it, they might have those, might too accumulated closer towards the end of the, uh, of the year. So, you know, I know you haven't had a lot of time to look at it, but do you have any questions about this or anything you want to?
Do we have any idea if it's one person who's late to class a lot, or if it's a lot of kids that are late to class?
Yeah, we, the tardies, when we know that it's a student who's tardy, that we, we adjust, and we put a lot of focused attention on that. But, no, I don't think it's one student who's tardy.
No, I don't think it's one, but like, it doesn't give me an idea of how it breaks down in the sense of like, okay, we might have five or six kids that are late a lot, and then it makes it really hot.
Absolutely.
Or is it that there's a lot of kids that are being late, you know, I don't-
Yeah, and, and we can, and, and in the future, we can disaggregate it that way, for sure. I just like, this is a new experience for you. Um, it, it, that's something that we've looked at. I mean, it's certainly something that, you know, I know the frequent offenders and, as does Mr. Spetzel in R R C, so.
Stephanie, I just wanna make a, an observation. When I read this data chart, um, I hope that you'll notice that the lower level types of behaviors are at the top, and the more serious ones are very few and far between. This is actually, and I've been in, I've been in, um, seven or eight high school districts in the state of Vermont in my career, and this is excellent data. There is great school climate in this school, and there are very, very few, what I would define as, as, um, significant behavioral issues. Um, I've been in schools where the principal and the assistant principal spends the lion's share of their time just processing student issues. Um, for whatever reason, I think it's, it's, we have the, the supports in place that are appropriate, but we also have some really good kids. When you look at the cuts, all right, so maybe somebody decides to cut, you know, and that's a little bit at the top. Look at, as you go down to the second cut and the third cut. So somebody cuts, and then they really don't tend to do it again. So, somebody cuts and then they really don't tend to do it again. So, think about this data in terms of severity. Very insignificant things going on, uh, in higher numbers. But the things that make the biggest difference, very few instances.
So, how many blocks are there then?
There are four academic blocks, two in the morning, two in the afternoon, and then there's a, a callback block with the lunch in between, so.
So, it's five?
It's, isn't it eight?
Well, it's block four, block five, and block six are, is a, is really the length of the block and a half.
Here, here's where I'm going with this. So, it's five hundred students times six classes a day, times a hundred and eighty school days? So, you know, do that math, you've got sixty thousand?
Opportunities to cut.
Sixty thousand opportunities to be tardy? Sixty thousand opportunities to cut?
Yes.
Okay, then look at the, the looking.
Yes.
It's, you know, this, this doesn't seem like a rampant, uh...
No, yeah.
Problem.
And I, I really have to, I really have to give the credit, we have a, a wonderful, uh, support structure in place called RRC, the Resource Response Center. And, uh, they concentrate on middle school. I mean, establishing a respectful behavior and respectful climate and processing behavior infractions in a respectful way. And they do that through protocol, and they've done it for students in the past. And, uh, we can talk about it a lot, but, uh, and, and you can see that in, in a lot of cases, uh, the, you know, the distracted behavior, they drop off after ninth grade. I mean, we, we focus on seventh grade and eighth grade. And, you know, kids spend some time tracking their own data, understanding what their triggers are, getting, uh, data back from classes for five days, spending a lot of time processing behavior in RRC. And, and kids understand it, I, I think to a certain degree, your basic eleventh grader thinks that if they disbehave, they might still get put on a plan and keeps them from misbehaving. I think there is a perception out there that they might have to walk around in that sheet and have their initials, right?
Josh?
And, uh... And, uh, and I think it...
I don't think I've ever been on a plane.
Were you? Morning meeting, Josh?
No, I was, we did, I did, I was in a morning meeting that we had a plan for a year, a multiple year.
The meeting, I mean, the morning meeting?
Well, no, we had one kid.
There was one, yeah, one student that continuously was on a plan that turned into a year-long project.
He was then removed, he wanted to be there. And he had, he had one meeting in the first floor.
Um, look, to lower down on the bottom are the, uh, the, uh, the instances that we must report to the state in the combined incident reporting system, uh, that we harass individuals, um, drugs, alcohol, tobacco violation, uh, any, um, physical infractions. You can see those are very, very low here.
So, anything with a, a number in parentheses is, is reportable to the state? Is that how that works?
No, the number is more a product of the, the way they dumped it. Um, we were using, we're in the process of moving from one system called SWISS to our, our school is a righteous system, Power School. And, uh, we actually had to dump it into a spreadsheet from one to the other.
So, two disparate comments. What is about re, reporting? So, it would be helpful to be able to look at these annually?
Yes.
You know, with up, with some variance to look at trends, what's going on? How is this comparative prior year would be helpful? One item that I wanted to point out, because I think it speaks well for us, but I'm interested in how the recording works for this, is bullying. Uh, you know, when I read in the paper what the, um, cause of teen suicide, or, you know, bullying is at the top of the list. There's been substantial work, uh, on a statewide basis on this issue. It's one that we should all be concerned about. And I look at these numbers and say, wow, you know, that looks like we don't have an, a, an issue here. But how is that reported? Where does that number come from? Who determines what's an instance of, of bullying?
Well, there's a legal definition for bullying. And in order to report it to the state, it has to fall under the legal definition of bullying. There is unkind behavior that happens all the time, um, to students, but, and we treat it all the same. I mean, we are required to address bullying in certain ways, there must be letters, there, you know, certain notifications, it does get reported to the state. But you can be as mean to another student and not have it constitute legal bullying. And so, you know, the idea is we want that, we want that behavior to stop. Everyone deserves to feel safe. Um, and, you know, harassment and bullying is a very fine line between harassment. Harassment is simply bullying, but it, it has to do with a protective category. So, bullying is repeated, uh, over time, it's intentional. Um, harassment is, again, one of the protective categories, race, you know, sex, gender, gender identification, religion, and, um, so, uh, but there's, you know, some of the others might be under school conduct policy violation or disorderly conduct. Uh, you know, there's a variety of places that kind of unkind behavior might fall. We're, I mean, our children aren't very, our students are as, you know, they are human beings and we too have differences of opinion, but we, we, and that's where RRC comes in. I mean, they do a lot of processing and we do too. And, and that's, that's a bottom line for me. Everybody deserves to feel safe and protected here. And we won't, we won't tolerate that. And that's, it's probably one of the areas that we come down the hardest on students, because we want them to understand the impact of their words and their behaviors toward their customers.
It's the seventh, I believe it's the seventh one down, A W O L?
AWOL.
Oh, A W O L.
Accent without leave.
Got it.
Um, and that's a, a variety, that's sort of a variation on cutting, but it mostly, um, applies to callbacks. Uh, a class cut would be a deliberate cut. I, I refuse to go, I'm just not real close to being, uh, sometimes a student. It's a less sort of, um, intentional, they're, they're sort of missing. They, they saw a loophole and they took advantage of it. They're, they're, so they're, they're supposed to go to callbacks and they went to a different callback because of their friends that are reporting, and that might be considered callback. Uh, the, the students might have a different, or, you know, be able to explain that a little bit better.
Speaking for, I'm in chorus, and I know Mr. Jordan gives a ten-minute window at the beginning of, from ten fifteen to eleven o'clock. And if you have not showed up by eleven o'clock, we do attendance manually on a beaver grid, she will go and A W O L you. So, it doesn't matter if you roll in the door, you know, past that point, you know, two minutes, she's A W O L you. And the attendance can be changed, but you're, you know, ten minutes into class and you're not there, you may not be cutting or avoiding coming to class, but you could be straggling in the hallway. It's incentive to get where you need to be on time. So, it's not just tardy.
Tardy you're showing up a minute late.
Yeah.
Well, you know, A W O L too, I'm, doesn't, I, I correct me if I'm wrong, RRC gets an alert. They're not, an email saying, A W O L, who's been A W O L, and they'll go find you.
And again, A W O L is usually used during the callback period. So, and a tardy would be a class. Or, again, tardy in the morning, it could be. I, I have to disaggregate this a little bit. I, I'm at a bit of a disadvantage, I can't hold these, this data right now, so I can't look at it the way I want to do it, because we're in the midst of moving data from one system to another.
I, I'm a little bit concerned about the sexual harassment showing up in the sophomore class. Uh, everyone ought to know what the rules are around here, but before they get there, why is there a bump?
Uh, I don't know, I'd have to look at the, I'd have to look at that incident. I, I, that doesn't, again, that's, um, if you look at the numbers, there's probably eighty-five or ninety kids in there. Uh, it could have been one kid, um, in a class saying inappropriate remarks about the, you know, the students in the class or something. And, uh, or a group of boys making fun of something or just getting caught up in something like that. I mean, there being five, I, I don't know.
Okay.
Firstly, I mean, I'd love to see those as zero, but sexual harassment is really another form of, really unkind behavior. It is, it, it could be, um, it, it's under the category of harassment, but it's in the, the area of gender. So, saying something unkind about, perhaps, uh, insinuating that a girl is promiscuous or something would be considered, it's harassment, but it's under the category of sexual harassment.
Good, thank you.
So...
Let's go on to the next presentation.
All right.
Just one question. When will the migration to Power School be completed?
Well, we're entering at Power School, but we started in the middle of the year. So, we, it's bringing the SWISS data over and then learning, uh, Power School is, uh, you have to build special reports and we, because we're just putting the data in there, we have to figure out what are the things that are useful. And then you build them and then you, it's a query that you run and then it dumps it into a set format. So, it, it opened the summer, uh, pretty much, we, we, we're using it for the first time with our seniors data. This means that all the SWISS data's been brought over to the seniors, but now it's getting to building those reports in Power School so that they can reuse.
So, twenty sixteen, starting twenty sixteen, it will be a full year of just using Power School.
And, you know, I, I went through a, a new student information system in my previous school, so I was part of the whole cohort training, so I knew that system as well as anyone because we all received training at the same time. I have not received the training in Power School. And, uh, you know, it, it is, uh, again, it, it relies on that other system to create reports. You have to, you need a report writer to do it, so. It's just, there's no perfect student information system. We learned that one in which shop family at the previous school. The next report is, um, the postgraduate plan, did you know?
Thank you.
Uh, and again, you know, this is, this is a, a work in progress. Again, it's something that I think we can do, is very, it's very easy to do. I don't know what it is you wanted to say, so, um, could, would it then?
Can I make it?
Sure.
I think it's, this is an important conversation, because as the board thinks about data, what you really need to start with is your vision. What it, what is it that we need to be working towards? And then, we will come back to you with aligning some pieces of evidence in the system that will answer the, your, the question, are we preparing our students for the future? So, rather than, you know, in your head saying, I want more of this and this, it's really important for us to develop what it is that we're shooting for. Um, and it's multiple forms of data. Survey data, it can be from the community, it can be from the, it's academic achievement data, it's information about graduates, there's a whole plethora of information. But rather than thinking about the data source, let's think about the reason why.
Coincidentally, while I was, uh, asking guidance and as the graduates, you know, it was May first, I think, when they had to ma, finalize their plans. So, you can't get postgraduate data until they've decided what they're going to do. And even then, it's not, it's not, so, and some of it's a plus. But, um, VSEC does a Vermont senior survey and they do an eighteen-month survey. And I received the twenty, class of twenty twelve, the eighteen-month survey. So, uh, I'm not going to go through this, I'm going to give it to you and let you look at it.
Correct.
You know, at this time next year, I will get the twenty thirteen data and then we'll start having some comparative data. There may be, this report may exist somewhere near the school, I had never seen it before, so. I'll, uh, pass that along to you. Um, it is interesting, it's eighteen-month survey because they want to see percentage of students goes back for a second year, how well they, how prepared they were. Our data and, uh, just, but for the class of twenty fifteen, uh, this is, um, we, ninety-two students are enrolled according to Power School data. Uh, this, the data that I receive from guidance, um, includes eighty-seven students' specific plans. And that might be the students that are outplaced, they're included in our enrollment and our, in our data, but they're not actually in the building. Uh, so, forty-nine students are enrolled in a two- or four-year school of those eighty-seven. Um, the average number, the average student applied to five schools. Um, and we had some outliers, a couple just applied to one and, and got in. Uh, and we had a couple of students who had twelve or thirteen applications out there. Uh, and I have a whole list, I, I did, I did, again, disaggregate it to that way. I can tell you how many, the percentage of students, you know, were waitlisted or denied or accepted. But it, it, you know, most students got into the schools that, to which they applied. Uh, there were some denials. But we want students distraction that way too, so. Uh, thirty-four students, um, are, uh, working, deferring to start, uh, going for a fifth year and or additional training. And two students are planning on, uh, enlisting in the military. One is already enlisted and one listed that as kids playing. So, eight of our students have accepted, uh, UVM's acceptance and are going to UVM. Eight are, six are going to CCB, five are going to Castleton, three are going to Champlain, three are going to Inteaca, two to Rochester Institute of Technology, two to Calvin College. I don't really know where Calvin College is.
It's out of the class.
Okay. And twenty other students are going to different schools, uh, one each, and I listed those here. Uh, they were from Maine College of Art, of Mass College, of Wigal Arts, Plymouth, there would be some I've never heard of, University of Mississippi, Lake Erie College, La Moine College, Becker, Kenyon, SUNY. We include, uh, there's a, a variety of schools that they apply to. And if I had to guess, I would say that finances are probably, uh, the number one reason a student suggests, or, uh, selects a school. And that's it. That's it for the data. Uh, there is a, a lot of data. We collect, uh, every student, um, indicates to guidance every school that, I mean, it's self-reporting, so, but every school that they, uh, applied to and what the result was, and then where they finally decided.
Thank you. Awesome. Does anybody have any questions?
Can that be shared?
Sure.
Well, I, I think, um, Joanne, your comment about we should try to think about what it is where we, we want to see reported is, is worth contemplating. This is a great, this is what I was looking for. So, how many kids are graduating and what are they doing? You, you, you got to that on the, on the first slide, so, uh, you know, the detail behind that is, is helpful. I think this, um, VSEC study, and if we have more copies, folks in the audience should...
I can make it back.
Should, should get it. It is going to be really, um, important, um, to look at and, uh, and, and understand. And, you know, I'm, I'm pretty impressed when I look at the last page, which is about persistence, like, did they stay in school? The percentage of regen students who stayed in college is higher than statewide. Ten percent higher than statewide. So, this is good information. This is the kind of stuff we should be reporting to the community. This is what we're getting. This, this is what we're, our kids are achieving. It's great stuff, thank you.
Thank you. Student reps? Would you like to report?
Well, here without our senior counterpart.
I'm sorry, can, can I add one more in my report?
Absolutely.
I would like to announce the student rep. So, we had three candidates, all very well qualified, in a variety of ways, very accomplished in academics and, and curriculums and curriculum. Uh, Joanne and I interviewed them. I solicited the information from the classroom teachers. And, uh, based on sort of a, just a profile of, of strengths and interests and building on the strengths and interests of the, of the two that we have here, uh, uh, we selected Eva Cannon for the board rep. It was a hard decision, but Eva is playing in the jazz band tonight, maybe thirty-one here, but has made, uh, attended board meetings prior to.
I'm very excited to have her.
I saw her play, she did a great job.
And you two were continuing?
Yes. So, Eva will be a junior next year and these two will be seniors.
Oh, are, are you sure of that?
No.
I'll be sure, I'm sure.
Okay. Going way back to my high school graduation, there were a couple of people that after they walked across the stage and got their diploma, looked at it to see if it was some...
Just to make sure.
We always joke whenever the college graduations season comes around, how many students invite their parents to dinner the night before and say, "Thank you Dad." I'm not walking to them. Um, we don't have a whole lot to report seeing as our last board meeting was just a short while ago. Um, finals begins tomorrow. Bachelor laureate for seniors is, I believe, last, last night. Class night is Wednesday night, if I'm correct, and graduation is Friday. Class night is Wednesday night, if I'm correct, and graduation is Friday at 7:00. 6:00?
We do have a state championship, Tracked didn't win a state championship, I think it was the four by one.
Four by one, yeah.
That's awesome. For a school without a track?
I know. Boy, we have some good others in the school.
All of our other spring sports have ended, we didn't need to get to the championships with softball or baseball or lacrosse. But I think the students had a wonderful time playing, they had a great season, you know, tried very hard, very successful games.
We did upset the three seed Milton as a 14 seed. We almost beat the five seed Lake Region, lost by one with a guy on third in the last inning. It's a long way to come back after a loss. And we would have had to play the Royal after, which is a two seed, and we had some for the Royal, so we were this close, but.
Next year.
Go to next year.
But other than that, not much has been happening, students were very excited to have summer vacation.
Thank you. I wanted to say also to you, thank you very much for taking the time to make sure that we had an opportunity to thank Tia last year. That was.
It meant a lot.
It did mean a lot, I could tell. I appreciated you taking that effort, I wouldn't have known to do it, so.
I'd like to thank both Joanne and Stephanie because they've attended several end-of-year events, which is not always the norm for administration, and it has been noticed by the kids. And they appreciate it, so thank you.
That's a good cake last night.
Yes.
Now, that was a kid, do you know how to get her there at the food?
Do we have any information about summer school this upcoming?
Thank you.
I was just, I was.
Where are you going?
No. As far as I know, no. But just, what courses are being attended or how students are attending?
Let me first say that I have had to slow Stephanie down because we currently do not have a budget. We do plan on running some part of summer school because it's funded through the 21st Century Grant, but there's another component of credit recovery and so we're not fully sure the scope of what we're going to be able to offer.
Don't we also offer an SAT?
That's part of what's on the question, Jeff.
That's funded by local funding.
I took my SAT keys this past Saturday. They're not fun, but I think prepping playing is really essential, no matter, you know, however, whatever level you have gone to in math or reading or writing.
Yeah, I mean, I've taken mine twice. I took mine the second time and, eh, no. I ended up, I did 200 points better on the second time. I mean, I ended up with like, I got 1900. So, I mean, definitely that prep, there's prep that helps. I got a book and then I, if you sit down and do a book, it'll be all right.
And to the best of your knowledge, your test outputs haven't been lost?
Oh, no. No, I hope not. No, we were talking with Mrs. Ambrose in problem solving about how more and more schools are becoming test optional, but often what qualifies you for merit scholarships from a variety of different universities and colleges is your SAT scores and that they stand out from, you know, the average that they accept. I know problem solving has been a wonderful class for me, particularly in math. I solved a lot of very familiar problems on Saturday, which was comforting to know that, you know, there is a class in school that you can receive credit for here and also, you know, I think this huge test that's going to determine a lot.
Thank you.
Superintendent? So the superintendent's report is as presented, but I did want to point the board's attention to the process that we use to adopt the, or to select a food service. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, you can see that we did have a process. We thought about our decisions being aligned to the wellness policy. And while the service that we would like to go with is not, did not provide us with the least expense, we feel that it was a good decision given all that we considered in the final result.
So my question is how to read what projected revenue means? Because the selected service when producing what would appear to be net, more net revenue. So I'm not sure we're, why the cost issue is pertinent if on a net basis we in fact are choosing the one that's producing more net revenue.
Well, I, what I was thinking the board would question me on is the overall cost.
And the projected revenue is based on the participation, the reimbursement rate and, you know, all of the special programs that they do, they're generating more, plus they're getting more adults involved which are not in the numbers. So that's where the projected revenue is coming from, is that more participation, more reimbursement and more adults participating in à la carte items. I know that as an employee of the central office, I come over here at least once a week to buy salad because it's the best salad in virgins and for the best deal, for the best deal. So I will still contribute at least once a week to this place, so.
That brings up a question. We're trying to get to the federal rate. How come the high school did not increase rates for the next year?
We wanted everyone, George, to, I mean, you can see the vast differences between the elementary schools and we didn't want the high school to get so far ahead, so we decided to just freeze it and try to get all the other schools up to the virgin junior high school rate and then go for another.
Then we can increment it, you know, as a district moving forward, you know, everybody's going to go up this amount. And so everybody's on the same page this coming year.
I think the food has improved since we have been here in seventh grade, starting seventh grade, vastly since then. Whether it just be options for quality of food for where our food is coming from in terms of local ingredients.
I have two things, unless somebody else? Are we composting again?
Yeah, I believe they're still hauling it, I mean, we're separating and compost, but they're hauling it separately.
I'm sorry, what?
Hauling.
We're hauling it.
Oh, so we are composting, we're just making it as craft property?
Correct. Yes.
So we are composting, we're just not.
We're just in the waste stream, we're just, but we're not compost, we're not making compost and turned around to that.
Cella has graciously offered to take one weekly container away from us, which is about, I think, 32 gallons, you know, it's a big container. That is something that Stephanie, we should probably definitely check into come next year because it was supposed to be only for this year, so that needs to change.
Composting is good, taking things out of the waste stream is good.
We are.
Rats are bad.
Rats aren't bad, yes. We are presenting on Wednesday night to Abson, Harry Sulloway's board for funding the course.
Great, thank you. And then I just want to say out loud, I'm sure the cafe services and every, all previous food service contracts have predicted a revenue and we're in a $50,000, $150,000 deficit, okay, so we've been, so.
That's part of the discussion. We have some ideas for how we might be able to bring down costs, but also we want to address the issue of revenue with them as well so they understand where, what we're trying to accomplish.
And you think that will help reduce the.
Potential, not for the previous deficit.
Of course, but going forward.
Yes.
And I had a couple of other questions on the audit. When is the meeting for, with the new auditor that Tanya is having?
Tomorrow, it's actually Tanya and myself.
Awesome. And the agenda for the policy committee?
Yes.
Could you send that to me? I guess I can just ask Laurie to send it to me, just shoot her an email.
We could send the, we could make it a habit of sending the policy, any committee agenda to the full board.
I certainly would like to see the policy committee agenda on the committee, but I'm very interested in what's going on.
We can post it.
And we post it because they.
The financing, the audit committee.
Is it usually a couple of days before or just wondering about?
I don't know yet.
Yes, it is, Laurie.
Speaking of information to the board, we really, really need to move away from emails to us the day of the meeting. We aren't always where we can see email that day. If we get it no later than the night before, then we can have the information and be ready to discuss it in a reasonable manner. But all of the stuff that comes out the day of the meeting, it just, you either don't see it because you don't get next to the computer or if you get there, you might, you might see that it's there and run a print of it, but you still don't have time to read it ahead of time.
George, I hear what you're saying and what I've tried to do because I agree with you, I don't expect board members to see it the day of the meeting. I send it electronically in case you want a record of it. If it comes on that day, and I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I bring a paper copy to the meeting because I want to recognize that I didn't give you enough time to review it. Obviously, there's, the intent is to give board all information prior so that you can read it. And I have to say, I'm pretty impressed with board members, the way that you're prepared for the meetings most of the time. But there are some stragglers that come and some last thoughts that I have, like, you know, the data that came today that I wanted you to have, but it was not because I wasn't going to give you a paper copy, it's just so you can have a record of it electronically.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the superintendent's report?
I'll make a recommendation, please. Because Mr. Verdict has been very patient and his, the discussion we need to have with the board on the discussion involves him and relates to Tanya's report, may we move up the discussion items now so that Greg does not have to wait.
Does anyone have a problem? So we're moving 5B, is that where we're moving?
No.
5A.
5A.
A and B. A and B.
Thanks, Greg, for coming.
Thank you, Joanne. Did it look like I was fading?
Yes.
Yes. I was getting worried about you.
You were fading an hour ago, Greg.
Hard cheers.
So the problem statement is that the school directors are not approving bills before the treasurer signs the checks. Because the finance committee meets once a month, sometimes they're late and sometimes we're assessed a late fee. And so we have some suggestions tonight for the way in which the finance committee and the board and the treasurer and the business office works together. So the first thing we'd like to suggest is there are times when we receive bills for large payments such as the bond or we might find that there's going to be a huge discount for a large purchase like technology that we would like to follow up with. And what would be for the normal course of bill paying to happen would leave us at a disadvantage in both of those cases. So what we'd like to recommend is that we go ahead and process the bill before the board's approval. This is only done in extenuating circumstances and the finance committee will have a chance to review it and question the decision. This is important for us to establish with the treasurer because he would be looking in normal circumstances for the board's approval before he signs a check. The second thing we'd like to recommend is because if the finance committee continues to meet once a month, you must realize that to give the treasurer your support to sign checks in some cases, this happens before the finance committee or the board has a chance to authorize it. So by signing, the treasurer is, if you allow the treasurer to sign it before it goes to the board for the signed warrant, this is authorizing only that the procedures have been followed, such as the purchase order system and signatures. Not that, not that there is enough money in the budget because that's more of an internal check. If the board wants the orders to be reviewed by the finance committee first, before the checks are signed, the finance committee will need to meet twice a month so that we can avoid those late fees. Because often the way that the bills come in and the process that we follow internally are not in line with the amount of time that we're given to pay it without that late fee. So we thought it would be a good idea to have this discussion with the treasurer present so that we can get some clear direction from the board concerning how you want things to flow.
I thought that what we were seeing was already paid in all cases, so then I don't understand the situation.
The situation is you have a new treasurer now and he is not going to sign a check unless the board is authorizing him to do it. Before, it was just being dumped. He has a set of rules or that.
Principles that he's operating.
Principles that he's going to operate under and he needs direction from you.
Do you want to speak to that, Greg?
I can, quickly. In the past, everything was processed and the treasurer signed after the fact. Checks were gone. I am of the opinion that I am involved in your, in your how you pay environment, not what you buy, but how you pay. And so when I review checks, I look for a purchase order, which you've spoken to last month. Tanya and I had a couple of conversations about some that didn't happen that way. So I look for a purchase order, I look for an invoice, I look for Stephanie's approval. And if I get those and the check register from the business office and the check, if that all matches, I'm okay to sign. My position is, is that I don't want to sign and then the checks go out before the finance committee meets or your preference. I can sign them when I can, you can create your own environment when you want them released. I'm just of the opinion that whether or not the finance committee has seen them or not, I'm going to do the same thing that I do, whether they've looked at them or not. So if you want the finance committee to look at them, that's fine, that's your call, but I'm not going to sign them until I look at them. It's just, just kind of the way that I think, even though Title 16 doesn't speak a great deal to what my responsibilities are, it's kind of a, to me, it's, if you can make all those four pieces work, I'll sign it. If you want to hold it until your committee looks at it, it's your call.
Well, it's never been done.
That is correct.
And what you're suggesting is a significant improvement over what has been done, I suspect, Greg, the fact that you're going to not sign the check unless there's a PO, an invoice and an okay from Steph.
Well, and I'm, I think I'm reasonable, you know, if somebody needs something that can't wait for a PO, I'm, I'm not, all right. But yes, yes, that is the sequence that you will see. And before, I have to, that's the way it used to be, what Chris described. It's been done that way for a long, long time, long time. So we're altering things, but, but it generates, if I may be so bold, it generates a question for me. I've read the charge you've given to your, to your finance committee. What is it you want your finance committee to do? Because by the time the purchase orders get there, the horse is out of the barn, it's way too late. So if you want the finance committee to just touch and go through, that's, that's your call. But I, I would question where they fit in other than if you want to save yourself 15 or 20 or 30 minutes at a. other than if you want to save yourself 15 or 20 or 30 minutes at a board meeting. I've been involved with other schools where they met a half hour before. I worked in an environment where they were on my desk for eight hours and the finance committee got to commit from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night, my office. Nobody took anything. You want to look at them, you look at them. And if they weren't looked at by 5:00, they were gone. Your choice there. But I just feel comfortable with what the business office and the administration have given me. It was wonderful, but the last time I was there, I think I signed three runs because the committee just didn't get to them. So you just, if you want to not release the checks until your committee's looked at them, I'm all right with that. But I'm not going to sign them until I review each one of them. And it doesn't take...
It sounds like we have a tremendous improvement in the treasurer's position here and that's, that's all to everybody's benefit. But we need to decide where the finance committee is going to sit on this.
I feel like that what we've done so far has, despite the fact that things have already been paid for, that we've learned a lot about what we're paying for and what's going on and have asked a lot of very interesting questions and have uncovered a great deal of things, but we haven't gotten away of the day-to-day process from moving along because our schedules weren't able to meet that, if you want to call it, holiday of twice a month or more to make it work. And when we have a treasurer who is checking to make sure that it has the four, the three or four things that we really needed to have before we think it should go out the door, then I feel like that's another safeguard to, to the process and that we don't necessarily have to duplicate that. We still need to do the research and the finding and the looking through it that we have been because we're going to gather more information and we're going to start asking questions. But it doesn't necessarily have to wait for us.
I've been doing it for a really long time without it waiting for us. I think it's a significant pick and improvement to have you there and looking at them and, and certainly we aren't looking at all. We don't look at all the invoices. We do a random selection because there's so many. One of the things that I didn't hear you say was where it's booked in the account and what line item is, it's booked. Nor do you look at whether we're over budget in that line item or not.
So we actually had this discussion the other day. And as I indicated, what you buy in my definition and my position is not my place, whether you buy Typhon, Rota pencils or Axel pencil pen. And so that, that question drove why the finance committee is looking at these things. And so we, we, the administration, Tanya and Joanne and I, we're talking about that sequence. Where is the connection between what you spent, what I spent in your, in your stead, cash? How much have we paid out? And where does that fit? There is no connection. The only connection lies in, in the business manager's hands, competent hands in the computer in a printout on a monthly basis that shows, and I think Jeff touched on it, budgeted, spent to date, encumbered, available balance. That's the only way you can connect because the four pieces that I have don't show that information. Obviously, the PO doesn't and the invoice doesn't, the check doesn't, and the check register just confirms in my mind that Tanya's people have processed it. It's booked and I know it's going against cash. That next step, huge step, in my opinion, is, is another area that leads to discussion. And, you know, we, we talked about various places that it's been handled in different ways. That step, I think, is critical. Absolutely critical. You go through it, you have a finance report that you reach out and touch, kind of. Tanya has told you many times that, that of that whole budget, you know, you've got 70 some odd, I forget what the number is, Tanya, that's payroll and benefits. I have my signature photo-pressed on the payroll because 99% of that is guaranteed. I go through and check the hourly people to make sure they, you know, and I don't do every one like you don't do, I just, but I'm comfortable with that, with the step. The next step is the critical piece. How do you tie what you just paid for with how much you got left and whether or not you're over, going to be over, not going to be over? That verges, in my opinion, on not my job. Verges on it. I, I, I would be interested in having that discussion about how could you parlay what I do with a report from Tanya without stepping on Tanya's toes into telling you where you're, where you're over or where you're under or, I don't know, that's, that's not really my place. But Tanya has the expertise, she has the computer software, she has the support of the administration. She can do that. Stephanie is on the front end because Stephanie, I'm assuming, looked at a lot of that stuff before you even approved. So they're coming at it from both directions. That's a critical piece that needs to be done somehow.
Just for two cents. Purchase orders right now will not be processed through the ADS system unless there's money available in that line item.
Okay, I, I knew that.
So if there's a purchase order, Stephanie has already made the conscious decision that there's enough money in there or she has moved money to accommodate that purchase from another area. So rest assured, if there's a purchase order, that line item is not over budget.
Actually, I don't sign a purchase requisition before checking to see that there's money available in the budget. And actually, I don't sign a purchase requisition until I check to see that that is something the person requested or we planned the budget this time last year.
Okay. And I think that would be a perfect system if every single expenditure had a PO. But every single expenditure doesn't have a PO.
Right, but I, right, but I said, but they do have purchase requisitions if they don't have POs. So...
But that's not with the invoice, right? I've never seen a purchase requisition.
Blue sheet that has my little scroll initial on it. Every single one, every single thing that goes through there has a purchase requisition or a PO, that's one or the other. And that was a process, same thing with my secretary.
Like I said earlier tonight, Stephanie has expenditures right here in a chokehold. And that's what's going to say this. I'm sorry, I truly am, Stephanie. I don't mean to put pressure on you.
No, I'm working very hard to do that.
But I think you're doing a tremendous job and I think that we underappreciate you.
Okay. So it sounds like you're going to do some general, but you're going to have general expectations for all expenditures with the exception of the payroll. You're going to look at some of the hourly, you said. Salaries, we're going to rely on the employees saying, hey, that's not what you're supposed to be paying. You're supposed to be paying more than this or whatever. And then as far as the expenditures, other expenditures are concerned, you're going to look at each one for reasonableness. You're going to look at each one for having a purchase order, having an invoice, and also the steps that are paid. And if they don't have a PO or an invoice or some payday or any combination of those, are you not going to sign the check?
That is correct. I've been in three times, I think, and I've not signed two. One didn't have an invoice. The other one, the invoice amount didn't match the check amount. So Carol, the AP person, was looking into that. And my understanding has been, I'm not signing this, but if you can solve this for me, just give me a call and I'll come in and sign it. So it's not like I'm going. But at the time, it didn't make my four little, my list of four.
Okay.
Can I suggest something else? Because it's only a discussion item, I think when the finance committee meets, it should be a bigger discussion item and then some action or whatever taken then.
Right.
I don't think that you, I think with the explanation that went through here and, and what Greg is comfortable with and what I'm doing, I think you need to think about it and then figure it out. I mean, it's only...
How does the board feel about that?
Three out of the four are the finance committee's.
So, you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm a chart and graph guy. I made my chart, treasurer, finance, board. I've got the four steps the treasurer's going through. I see two steps for the finance committee. Proper classification and budget review. And then the board's role should be a monthly budget report that you've already seen.
What? Should have. And then we would approve already reviewed expenditures.
Right.
And a budget to act on.
The practice is getting better.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I mean, we can pay timely, get discounts, avoid late fees with the assurance that there is proper oversight and control by each of us.
And how do you feel about the first bullet?
No, I was, I was going to raise my hand to ask to follow up on what Jeff just said.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll, I'll wait.
I couldn't agree more with, with what Jeff said. And before I make my statement, I want to make a statement that your administration, in my opinion, is doing everything they can in the deep end of the pool to do a very good job. And I'm, I, me personally as treasurer, I'm very comfortable. However, I still think you, as a board, have a responsibility to make sure that they're doing their job and so that we don't run into what we ran into two years ago. I think that's, that may have been a critical piece. I don't know if that was a personality thing or not. But if, if they're making you feel real good, you got a check. And, and I am in full support of those three administrators right there. I'll say that unequivocally.
No, I totally agree with that.
However, you've got to, I mean, there's lists that can be developed that can say, you know, when does the staff report due? When do the special ed reports due? When is the first quarter special ed due? When is the budget report due? When are the, and that sheet's very simple when it comes to you every month or did you do this month's quarters, 940, you know, 941s or? It's real simple. And I don't believe that any of them would oppose that kind of peeking over the shoulder. But Jeff phrased it much better than I did. I'm sorry, I cut you off when you were...
So I, I think, I was going back to the first bullet, which is there will be some exceptions to whether you review the documentation before the check is actually signed. And I'm asking, are you comfortable with, this feels, mm, like I was imagining maybe there would be a dollar amount, like...
500? A thousand?
Yeah.
I mean, a hundred thousand?
Yeah, no.
What, what we're asking for, what, what that bullet really means is we have a bond payment due of $550,000. And all we're, there's, you're going to have the invoice from the bank stating when it's due and the amount and the amount of interest. And it's due in a debt. Because we deal with peoples, all we have to do is run it across the street. So what we're asking for is Greg just comes in and signs that check before it's approved by the finance committee by whatever so we can get it to the bank. Because we are going to wait until the very last minute to pay that bill. We're not going to pay it early.
Well, but we're not changing anything that would require the finance committee to look at that before he signs it in?
I'm in concurrence with Tanya. I don't have a problem doing that because she's still going to have to satisfy my four, my four pieces. And if it facilitates us making 52 cents more and, and then pay, I don't believe this is going to happen a great deal. The other side of it is, is sometimes, not a lot, you may get some order that says that if you pay in 10 days, we'll give you 30% off. That's the other driver that I would look at. But same four requirements from the business office, I'm okay signing that.
Don't, don't we save money when we make a payment early to the bank?
Oh, not on bonds.
Really?
You're, you're set in stone. You pay the same interest that you pay. Not on bonds. The only time that you save money on interest is on a line of credit and if you pay that back, then you don't get charged the delay fee. But on bonds, no, they're, they're the scheduled principal and interest and you pay that.
But you can't be a minute late.
You can't be a minute late. They will call you right up if you're a minute late, demanding that money be wired.
So do you feel, Greg?
I'm, I'm quite comfortable in the environment that we have crafted.
The finance committee, I mean, essentially, it sounds like the finance committee is going to, I'm going to take, I'll do this. And we're meeting on the 18th and we'll talk about it on the 18th and then we'll come back and report to the board. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's going to be anything that we're going to... That's what we're going to come up with, is what I expected. That's the kind of, the kind of review that we might be doing. It's similar to what we've been doing, but not quite as detailed because you're already have told, POs are going to be there.
But the clarification I would seek would be, do you want the business office to release on my signature or the finance committee's signature?
On yours.
I would, I would be comfortable with it.
That's, that's perfect.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's stand, that's been standard operating procedure and we don't have any reason to change it necessarily.
Yeah, I feel more comfortable with his standard procedure for how it's going to work and what we're afford.
Yes, because his, his signature is a handwritten signature on every AP check. He, he is refusing the electronic signature. So with, with the previous treasurer, her, her signature went on every check and immediately went out the door. So you are getting a better, with him reviewing everything and then signing the check.
The only question I have is that I think we should formalize this with a motion.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And the reason I'm nodding my head is in the course of doing some research on behalf of the audit committee, one of the things I came across was an annual motion that one of the school districts I was looking at made with respect to just this issue. So I'll find that and we can have it as an agenda. I know for our next meeting.
Sounds good.
I think having it written out as well in some formal way would be, be helpful because it lets everybody know what their expectations are.
Yeah, well, that motion would do that.
Right.
So I'm, I'm sorry to be a little behind, but what you're talking about, Jeff, is the motion would clarify what Greg is already doing and also possibly clarify what the finance committee is doing.
It's, it's authorizing, it's authorizing him to do his thing without our prior review and to, for the administration to release the checks after he has done his thing. We're going to be looking at it afterward. And if we find a problem, then it's something that we're going to have to go backward to address. But I don't, I don't think that we want to slow down this process. We want to avoid those late fees that we've been getting. And this is going to do that.
Okay. So... So, I may be splitting hairs. I just, the last sentence in the problem bugged me. Because the Finance Committee meets one time a month, sometimes the bills are paid late? That is, that is just not a true statement. Bills are paid late, it has nothing to do with the Finance Committee.
The check...
I guess my understanding of the Finance Committee is that you were providing a higher level of oversight than you really are. So, that, that's why that statement was...
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't, have never reviewed the bills before they went out. It's always been active fact.
Well, my understanding is that you wanted it differently. So, what you're saying is that you recognize that bills do go out ahead of you. I thought we were moving in the other direction, Lori.
Oh, yeah.
So, that, that was my, that was my problem.
Okay, okay. So, I, I guess, I would like it noted in the minutes that it is not the Finance Committee's, was never the Finance Committee's responsibility to make sure bills were paid on time. And, and in addition to that, we noted that there were bills being paid late and we were paying late fees and we were asking why that was happening.
That's true.
And please understand that ninety percent of the bills are processed here. And then we, all we do is print check. Start of July first, everything is going to be processed through the office where I will have more control over when it gets paid.
Hmm. So, you're the one we're gonna come and see.
Yeah. But, you know, it will have a date when I receive it. So, I mean, it, it still hinges on, the mail is all coming here. Please realize that the postal service is very slow these days. So, it's taking more than three days to get an invoice anywhere in the state of Vermont to anywhere else.
That's terrible.
Two days, two days for first class.
Really bad experience.
So, anyway, I'm just, you know, the mail is still all going to come here. Everything's gonna be matched up and then it's gonna come over to our office and we'll pay immediately.
Okay.
So, that, that's our process. And, and when it comes to our office, it will be stamped with a receipt date, so you will know when it actually came to our office.
Okay.
Okay. I think we're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For bringing me up.
You stepped it up another notch. Thank you.
So have you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Principal...
She did, she did.
I, I...
That was a...
Copy's up.
Okay. Business Manager.
So, that was part of my report that we just did. We moved it up. There's also a copy as of today at one something, one twenty, and a budget to actual. I am giving it to you, Lori, to answer your question regarding the expenditure for your D.O. tuition. We no longer have a line called D.O. tuition because it needs to be called tuition regular education. As you can see on the first page, there is that line item with the expenditure reported without a budget line item. So...
Wait, what was that last part?
There's no budget in that line item.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Eight hundred and eighty dollars.
So, yes, and when you get to the end, please understand that it shows a two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar deficit. That is not accurate only because of the way that you budget your vocational center. It's pulled out in a budget and it's not part of your expenditure. The auditor's more, I mean, we pay it out of the right line. I have to do a journal entry to book the revenue and the expense. So, that, my projections are more accurate than what this is reading.
And what's your projection of that?
I gave you the projection last part.
Okay.
So, so, right, I'm thinking you're either gonna come in right at zero or no more than twenty thousand.
Okay.
And that's what Stephanie and I have, and, and that's not including the special ed deficit.
I understand. So, I'm, just to get us all literally on the same page. So, George, this is what I was pulling, so this is what, this is what we got at the meeting on the twenty-seventh. This is the one pager that's like an Excel spreadsheet that's the forecast. This is what you just handed out to us.
Is the actual expenditures.
Is coming out of the...
Yeah.
Two should tie, but this makes the adjustment for the, for the vocational center.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, and that, that's the, that's the budget to actual for you. The other piece of, I promised you and all Boards, not just you, that we would be doing our tax anticipation notes prior to July first, so that as of July first, they will be in place and we will have money to pay our bills come July second. So, I have presented the, whoops, I, I have presented the cash flow to Greg. He signed off on it. We then sent it to the People's Bank and they approved a one point one million dollar line of credit. This is based on, because we don't have a budget, the cash flow had to be based on eighty-seven percent of this year's budget. We do have a tax anticipation note that is due June twenty-first, twenty-fifth. At this point right now, with my calculations, we will be able to pay off one point five million dollars of that. It was a line credit of one point nine. Four hundred thousand dollars is, you should be receiving back in special ed reimbursement, but that doesn't come in until September. So, out of that one point one million dollars that we are asking for for FY sixteen, four hundred thousand dollars will cover that remainder of that line of credit for FY fifteen. So, we'll have a working tax anticipation note of seven hundred thousand dollars. On top of that, in September, we will be receiving at least four hundred thousand dollars in special ed reimbursement for the expenses from February twenty-eighth through June thirtieth. Understand?
So, the last statement you made, that four hundred is the same four hundred that's being paid off?
Yes. So, so, so what I'm saying is, they, they have to pay off their line of credit in frame on the twenty-fifth. So, four hundred thousand dollars of this line credit for FY sixteen will go to pay that off. And then come September, you will receive your special ed reimbursement for the third quarter for the last remainder of the year. That money will be your working cash to fill in the rest of that.
So, when that money comes in, you won't be making a principal payment on the line of credit at that time?
It's due October first. That, that four hundred thousand dollars, and they don't call it a line of credit, they call it a current expense note.
Oh.
So, yes, in October, on October first, that four hundred thousand dollars that you should have received from your special ed reimbursement will have to pay off that note. They also assured me that because the cash flow is based on the eighty-seven percent of this current year's budget, when we do get a budget and we do need an additional line of credit, we can apply for more. If we need it.
So, that's the seven hundred thousand is in the form of a line of credit, tax anticipation note? The note is just a form of acknowledging the debt, but it's not all drawn down in one lump sum?
Correct.
It's a revolving line of credit.
It's not revolving, it's a one-time draw. So, what I mean is, if you draw, if we need a hundred thousand dollars of that seven hundred, we need a hundred thousand, we draw it, if we pay it back, that doesn't mean we still have seven hundred thousand to draw from. We still only have six. So, what, unfortunately, the paperwork was not available to, for this meeting tonight. They need a couple more days than three to get the paperwork ready. So, they, it's perfectly legal and by statute that you can approve a line of credit or tax anticipation note amount and a current expense note amount in your minutes. And then when the paperwork comes in, all you have to do is sign the paperwork.
So, I'll make a motion so we can have discussion?
Sounds good.
Need one at a time, right?
One at a time, right.
One at a time, okay. So, I'll make a motion that the Board approve a borrowing of four hundred thousand dollars for a current expense note payment will be due on October first, two thousand fifteen. Interest rate?
They didn't give me an interest rate. It's low.
You pay a municipal...
Yes. So, it's like two, two and a half, two, no more than that.
Lori, you also?
Thank you, Stephanie. I got, they should have dismissed it. No, sorry. Go, 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 go. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And part two? We're just gonna...
Just one, one at a time.
So, so, I understand what we're doing here. We're gonna borrow this and we're gonna turn around and pay it back to them to pay off what we can't pay on the note that we already have.
It's because, it's, and it's only because of the way your revenue comes in for your special ed reimbursement. The final report from, from March first, your expenses that you incurred in March first through June thirtieth, I have to report to the state on August first. By the early September, they mail out the reimbursements. If you had all of that reimbursement prior to June thirtieth or prior to June twenty-fifth...
We wouldn't have to borrow.
You wouldn't have to have this. I could pay off the whole note and be done with it. But it's the way the mechanism works for financing special ed.
It's pretty junky.
I, I don't disagree with you.
Do we, wait, wait, do we get a second?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay.
Guess I gotta, as good a handle as I'm ever going to on that since... Those are the questions, let's do it.
And any other discussion?
So, George, the only thing I would add, listening to you ask that question, is it appears as though we don't have the ability to change the due dates, because that would be the way to address this. In other words, if we know the reimbursements don't come till October, why are we borrowing money with a due date of June twenty-fifth?
Well, lines of, lines of credit can only be in twelve-month increments.
Okay.
Which means that if you wanted to wait to get your money in reimbursement, you'd have to start your line of credit in October and that leaves three months with no cash.
So, that's the issue. I understand it's a twelve-month thing, so...
So, it appears that by that point in time, we will obviously have a budget. Because we have a budget, we will have a greater amount of availability of money from the bank. We could do a line of credit at that point in time for a year so that next year, we wouldn't have this problem. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but you're crossing fiscal years.
You're borrowing money, you're borrowing money now to...
I, I understand that, but if you borrow money, you're crossing fiscal years.
But, but the thing is that, that it's gonna make it less complicated. Every time you, you add a layer and make it more complicated, you're having a greater chance of having an error occur someplace.
I don't believe that a bank is going to let you borrow across fiscal years.
Okay, 'cause their, their source of repayment is not sure because we haven't passed a budget.
Yes.
So, if we had like three or four...
You wanna know how you're gonna pay? So, that's, okay, I...
So, we'd be stuck.
I get it.
You know...
And you have no income from the state until your September tenth payments. And you have people to pay in July and August and bills.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nice. That's everybody in their mind.
I don't think it would be really interesting to see this like on a timeline, like as in to be able to present it in a, in a sort of a different way, in a graph that kinda showed like this is where the revenue's gonna come in and this is where we're gonna pay it off. And it's gonna show it over like the twelve months and you could see that pattern of income versus payments, you know, on some kind of timeline like that. It'd just be a different way to present it that I think would make it, people would see, oh, here's what we're getting paid, here's what we're gonna pay this, here's what the revenue follows.
And, and the bank's gonna get paid. I mean, there isn't a school in this state that doesn't have a budget for the fifteen year, right? So, in sixteen, there will be a budget somehow. So, they're gonna get their money. They're just, they're just pulling our chain. Go ahead, Lori.
Okay. I will entertain a motion. I would like to entertain a motion for the seven hundred thousand tax anticipation note.
So, I'll move that we execute a tax anticipation note in the principal amount of seven hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand sixteen with People's United Bank based on an interest rate equivalent to the going rate for municipal.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I, I just wanna state again that I think that it's crazy that we have to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. It costs us interest, it increases the cost of education for no logical purpose other than the fact that the state just is not being reasonable.
The only way I see that you could solve that would be to double tax people in a year. Unless you can solve it some other way, you might ask.
No, the, when you, when you do end up with a surplus, you could carry it over and you could end up building up a, a fund that would take care of that, but they won't let you carry money over. Okay. I've, I've made my statement of stoneheadedness. I'm sorry.
And so, is there any more discussion? Say none, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passed.
So, as soon as I get the paperwork, I will email the Board to let them know and it will be available in Lori's office for signatures.
And all Board members need to sign?
Yes.
Hmm. That may be a little as a surprise to three people. That we went and spent a whole mess of their money.
I think they're well aware of that.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
So, I have a couple of questions as far as the schedule of findings is concerned that we got.
The schedule of findings?
From the Audit?
Yeah.
That's, okay. Is that just the SU? I thought these were related to us as well.
Jeff, you have a committee meeting today, maybe you could answer that.
Yes, those are Audit Committee reports.
So, what you're looking at is with respect only to the SU. Tanya has prepared responses for each of the individual school district. We looked at them briefly this afternoon. We looked at them briefly this afternoon. There's some, uh, corrections to, to be made, and then I assume they'll be looked at.
Yes, they, I've actually made corrections, and, um, they have been, they're out on your Google Docs being shared with you.
Okay. Um, and then as far as the procedures, accounts payable and payroll procedures? Um, the, the question I had was, um, what is the procedure going to be for invoices without POs? This all addresses expenditures with POs.
But it was my understanding that all purchases had to have a PO.
Well, that has been my understanding as well, but that isn't about the facts. That isn't the case.
Well, if there is a purchase requisition with this, with an administrator's signature on it, um, I understand that they have verified that there is money in that line item, and, and, you know, there are many companies that don't take purchase orders.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there are many instances where we don't have the information to generate a purchase order because it's happening at that point. So, tho, for those instances that, you know, I would verify that there's a lot, there's money in that line item before I would sign off on the payment.
I just think that should be part of our procedures, right?
But it's not...
This is all accounts payable. It does not include all accounts payable, is all I'm saying. Right? Because it only addresses the accounts payable that have POs. So...
So, the procedure needs to be included in there.
Right. All I'm just saying is the...
It would require a couple of other bullets. That's, that's it, yes. Because there could be an exception to the purchase order rule.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And this is just procedures, this is just information for us. Is that the idea?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so, so, um, maybe next meeting, which would be in August, we could have the new bullets.
With the new bullets for?
For the procedures with invoices without POs.
Oh, yeah. We, we, you don't have to wait until that. We can just update it and send it out.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you. And then one last question with this budget. Actually, you said... Reported period is nine million six. Incumbrances are six. We have a two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar, um, looks like that we have a two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar potential deficit? And you're saying we don't have that because of the way that the...
Well, if you look on page eight.
Right? Okay.
The expenses there, but there's no budget, because when I submit, when I submit my, wait, when I submit my reports to the auditor, the budget column has to match the amount you voted, that the voters voted in. And because you don't include the vocational amount in your budget that they're voting on, I can't put it in there until the auditors give me a journal entry to put it in there. Because they will see the resolution in the, that, that happens.
I'm not questioning that.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just explaining to you why that there's no budget there.
I, I wasn't asking that question.
Okay.
What I was asking is, can I take that three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars and add it back to that two fifty-two and come up with what we think the deficit is going to be?
Or surplus.
Surplus, in this case, right. Is that, is that a legitimate way of dealing with these numbers?
At this point, right now, yes. I mean, to accurately get where you think you are right now, yes, you would have to take that out of there or add it into your budget.
Right. That's, that's all I was trying to find out.
But then there's also a journal entry that I need to do to book the revenue and book the expense for the on behalf piece that the state sends.
So, the tie, um, I think sometimes less is more, sometimes more. So, um, at our last meeting, we got a, a one-page summary. It would be helpful if we're going to get this report to tie us back to this report. You, here, am I making any sense? Because otherwise, we're left doing this, and now we have the assumption that, well, wait, we're gonna have a surplus, and I don't think we're gonna have a surplus based on, or not a surplus of that dimension, based on the report we got on May twenty-seventh.
Okay, well, I, I was, I'm, there are a few board members that want to see the detail.
Got it.
So, that's why I, I just presented the detail as of today, so that I could answer an email question that was presented.
Got it. And, and what I'm suggesting is, I think on this Excel spreadsheet, it would only take maybe two lines to then just reconcile this to that. And then it would all be there. So, for those interested in the details, here's all the details. For those interested in the one-page summary, here's the one-page summary, and here's how they tie it.
Because it looks on the detail like we're gonna have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar surplus.
Right, so don't let us go spend all that in one place, is my point, 'cause there's, there's gonna be other, there's something else that you're gonna apply to that.
Yes, because the health insurance bills haven't been paid yet.
Okay.
And they're, they're non-encumbered, because we haven't set that up yet.
Okay. What in the future are they doing?
We're hoping to accomplish that this summer, but it's a lot more work than the three of us in the office can really do right now. We're just trying to stay afloat with the current day-to-day and all of the reports that we are, that I have to handle before August.
Are we going to be hiring that point-six person?
We've been advertising, Lori, we're still anticipating, but we, nobody wants a part-time job.
Nobody wants a part-time job.
So, we're looking at other ways to, to reorganize women.
Okay. Um, okay. 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 Number three, Charlie's not here. That's, and, um, approval of bills and director's orders, we don't have that. Um, we'll have those in August. Right. Approval of minutes. Uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-third? Eight. I'm two years here, sorry.
Saturday, just Saturday.
Okay, let's start with, yeah, it's actually, mm, it's not April twenty-third. It wasn't April the twenty-third. It's May twenty-third. Okay, so, minutes themselves actually say April. So, I will entertain a ma, a motion to, to approve the minutes of May twenty-third, meeting at nine.
I will so move.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I didn't receive those.
Those came out today, 'cause I just got them from Richard.
Got it.
Okay. Okay. And I, I, in addition to the month here...
Can we get a second, and then we'll talk?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I thought you had it.
He did. Excuse me. There's a second I missed. I thought it was George. Go ahead.
Okay. On the second page, uh, the second bullet, staff cuts are not a board disgusting item.
Disgusting.
Talk about a Friday and slip.
Disgusting.
So, that should be discussion?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Anything else?
No, that and the, and the month on the front, it's all I saw.
Okay. So, um, I also saw, on the first bullet on the second page, it should be June ninth of, not June eighth.
Oh, yes. Great.
And I think the second of the last paragraph, Act three sixty-one, instead of Act two sixty-one?
Three sixty-one.
It should be Act two sixty-one.
Yes, three sixty-one, you're right.
I didn't think there was another. Um, do you want to, before we... Were they typed, Glenn? Henry?
In the...
I guess we missed the opening, the point, the point on, uh...
Yeah, um, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's only the act that we...
Five.
Five days. It's ridiculous.
Just be good.
Right.
All right. Uh, any other discussion? Oh, did, did we, should, I wanted to know, did, should we clean up the language on the motion to make it reflect the motion that actually got warned?
What?
I, I, I think it would be a good idea to have it...
There's, there's no dollar amount. There's...
Oh, yeah.
I noticed that too, that there was no actual dollar amount.
Yeah, we didn't have the ten million, three, two.
Right.
Well, this, our May twenty-seventh minutes show that we adapted the warning, oh, for the information meeting, sorry.
Um, so, I, okay. We should amend the minutes so that the motion, and this is gonna be your call, George, uh, should reflect what was actually warned.
Yes, I agree. Definitely. I believe that in the actual motion, we did do that.
Oh, we did.
Somebody picked me up on it, because I didn't say it in the first place, which is why he recorded it the way he did.
Probably.
And then we added the actual amount to be voted on.
Okay.
So, yes, I would agree that this should be changed to show that that amount was in here. So, what was that amount?
Do you feel comfortable?
Ten million.
Two fifty-eight, nine thirty-three.
What do you have that in your eyes?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you feel comfortable doing that, Glenn? Making the minutes reflect what the warning?
As long as there's an amendment, yeah. I agree with that.
Okay. Um, right?
So, so do you want a, do you want to amend the motion to say as minutes as revised? Or as amended?
Yes, would you?
I, I so move.
And do we need to vote on that amended motion?
George is the maker.
George is the maker, so he can amend.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, we have a motion which has been amended, was on the floor and has been seconded. Are there, is there any other discussion?
Who's second?
Chris. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the May twenty-seventh minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay. Approval of tax anticipation, no, we already did. Facilities committee authorization. We were hoping to come up with a charge.
Uh, and I did not get to it. I apologize. What I would like to do is just communicate with Stephanie offline about getting our process started as soon as school's over, um, and we'll report back to the board with a proposed charge, but I know we need to get on with it outside, so...
Do you have a, a proposal? That...
To spend the revenue?
Right, how to spend the money?
Many, many suggestions.
No, 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 not, not, I'm sorry. The procedure to implement the spending, not what you're spending the money on, because I thought you said there was no...
This isn't about money. I, I would suggest to you, this has nothing to do with spending money right now.
Okay.
This is about looking at a plan that Stephanie presented to us last fall, that began to schedule out what the maintenance needs are, prioritizing that, looking at that relative to our creation of the capital reserve fund and the budgeting for regular maintenance, and coming back to the board for budget-building purposes to recommend priorities. We can also serve as a sounding board to help prioritize, okay, for this year's budget, I have X available, and I have X times ten things that I wanna do, where, where, where we best serve. But right now, it's not about authorizing specific dollars.
Okay. All right. So, are we, are, is the policy, I mean, the Buildings Committee going to be doing board work without a charge?
Um, I, I think that, um, let me try to phrase this correctly. You wanna get some work done over the summer. I've asked that we help serve as a, as a sounding board. We will need in July to authorize payments. So, I didn't get a charge written, because I haven't worked on the budget, and we've only had a week and a half since our last meeting. Didn't get to it, sorry. So...
Okay, but my, my concern still stands, and I, I guess I'd like...
So, what I'm suggesting is that we can come back for the July meeting with a proposed charge, and in the meantime, we're just advisory to Stephanie.
Jeff, could you clarify that, because there were no board meetings scheduled for July. What are you thinking?
Don't we have to meet to authorize?
What?
Oh.
We did the tax already. You just did the tax anticipation, no, in June. Which is really, the timing should be June, because the rate is set by July.
I just remember the one.
Okay, so, I, I'm wondering if we can accomplish the authorization of this committee just based on what you just said? Not just?
Don't ask me your heated, that's not...
I, I...
If I may, I think, I think that there's, there's groundwork here. It can be clarified later. I, I think that we can vote to establish the committee.
Okay.
And, um, Jeff, Jeff has got...
With the idea that the charge will come back to us in the August meeting?
Yes. Are you comfortable with that?
I'm fine with that. I just wanna make sure that we're not pulling things out.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do.
No, I...
Is to move those things forward.
So, I so move.
That we establish a finance, uh, a facilities committee?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we authorize a fi, a facilities committee? Um, and that will be made up of, do we need to say who that is? Uh, Jeff and, and Kurt are the two that I knew were interested.
I thought Richard indicated.
And I think Richard indicated.
Okay, so...
I'm, I'm interested, but I just don't have the time. If there's anything specific, okay, it's four, four of them willing to take...
Uh, well, the committee itself will have four.
Four is a core of it.
So, we wouldn't want more than, we wouldn't want four on the committee?
So, we want more than three on the committee from the board.
So, the motion is to a staff, to authorize a facilities committee with Richard, Kurt, and Jeff as members. And those three will meet, this is too much for the motion, I think, but those three will meet during the summer to help you prioritize, and in August, the committee will come back and give us a report and tell us what they think they should be charged with. That sound good?
Thank you. Second question. If I may, the only question that I have is that Stephanie has work that she wants to get accomplished during the summer.
Right.
And if we wait until August to get a report from them about what they're gonna do, you can't get a contractor to work in that short frame of time. So, I think that there needs to be an authorization for them to expend some of those funds.
So, to be clear, once we have an approved budget for FY sixteen, and includes operations and maintenance, and Stephanie's authorized to spend money under operations and maintenance, beyond that, looking out to the future, when we look at establishing the amount we wanna put before the voters for the capital reserve, and if we ever want to suggest tapping that for certain expenditures, that would come back to the board. But I think all we wanna do is serve as a sounding board to... for the coming year and to get work done this summer to help Stephanie prioritize among, okay, we have X available on the FY sixteen budget, how should we go about getting that?
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. So I'm not sure we got a motion on the floor. Did we? Okay, would you read it back? Please.
Um, George, the motion to authorize a facilities committee that will be, that will consist of Richard, Kurt, Jeff as members to meet during the summer with Stephanie to return it to the August meeting with a charge of the committee.
I'm second.
We do?
Second.
Okay. Do we want to amend that to say, um, they're providing prioritization assistance during the summer?
No.
Okay.
We'll let Jeff provide the charge when he comes back.
And in the meantime, he will do what he needs to do. Okay, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any other business?
We just have one other discussion item on the board.
Oh, three sixty-one. Okay, so the reason I brought this up was because, um, we're meeting at the end of June, uh, the supervisor union is meeting at the end of the June to, um, to talk about Act three sixty-one and I am feeling like we are, if, if we don't move soon, we're going to get behind the eight ball. And, and because we've got to have a vote by June thirty of twenty sixteen in our agenda.
It's the most, at least from what I understand, it would be the most financially responsible time period to get it done within.
Yes, I'm all for this, what I'm concerned about is that if, that we need to somehow be on top of the communication to the community.
Well, the thing, the thing is that because we've done this prior to my time on the board, we've done this twice before and it passed, and then it got shot down in retrospect. There's all of the information, you must have all of that information. You can dust it off, freshen it up, and we've got, we've got the basis to go with, right?
I actually don't have any information, George, but I, I would also suggest this, and while this board should discuss Act three sixty-one, this is really an SU decision, so any decision that you make here is really not, um, going to represent all of the member districts.
Well, we're not making any decisions, we're just discussing.
Any.
We're just trying to.
Push it along.
Yeah.
I, I, I am going to be in full support of whatever the board wants to do. Um, I'm also chasing information right now, I don't have anything in my office and I've, the only thing I can find are the articles of agreement. And Lori's looked for me, um, you know, anything that's been discussed at a board meeting, I, I can certainly download that information. I don't have any, uh, financial modeling, I don't have any minutes to the meetings.
But we, no.
Because it was all, it was all to the point where there were people that ran for the consolidated board. I mean, people were elected to take the, the board positions when it was authorized. It, in all of the, in all of the towns, there were, there were dual elections, there, there was the, fill in the seats on the regular boards and then there was fill in the, the seats on the proposed board. It, that all, that's got to be down in black and white someplace.
So, we, we have a couple of places we can, I mean, all of this was approved by the State Board of Education. So they may have, um, records. On the other hand, I, I would suggest to you that there wasn't a boxload of stuff. Well, I, I, I mean, as somebody participating, I, I don't think there was extensive financial modeling and I don't think, I, so, and, and I'm not sure that pulling out retreads is going to convince the community of the, uh, prudence in proceeding in that direction, so.
What's going to convince the community is the ten cents off the tax rate the first year, the eight cents the next year, the sixth the following year.
So it's, it's new information and that's why I'm not, I'm not sure that spending a whole lot of time trying to find the old stuff is going to be the best use of our time, it's going to be new information that may.
So, so then, while we can't officially charge you with this task because we are not the SU board, it would, I believe, behoove the whole district if you could come up with a structure.
Um, there, there are some steps in the wind right now at the SU, the, all of the member district board chairs have been invited to a meeting next week.
I remember where that.
Lori's could be on chat or whatever video, Jeff is joining me, Bill said he would be there. Michelle will be out of town, I believe. Um, where the Secretary of Education and members of the Gomont School Boards Association and VSA, Superintents Association, will meet in a very intimate setting with our group alone to say, these are the resources that we have to provide to you, what else do you need and what information can we provide you? So I believe that's going to get kicked off, you're going to have a meeting at the end of the month um, concerning what is in the bill, um, and some timelines. And, you know, I will take my direction from, from the school board members concerning where you want to go.
And I, I think that there will be model articles of association that we can work from and the advantage that we have as compared to other districts is, we are mindful of the issues that arose that were of concern in communities with respect to the financial status of the individual, uh, school districts and real estate issues, and I think we can go into that meeting and say, here's what we know are issues that we want to make sure we address.
And I've begun to do some background on both of those issues.
It's, I think that there, there definitely is a big issue with property. That's, I think that's on everybody's mind.
That, my, as I say, I think that's where we have the benefit of having been through the process. We can develop articles that address the concern or seek to address the concern.
Okay. Hunter? Thank you.